Good one to him, I got a rhubarb right in Apple. Your choice.
Which one?
They just the rhubarb, that's what I want. Should have just brought me out. But.
Of the agenda. And I believe we have a change. Tom or Mika? Uh, uh, push the button.
Thank you. You brought you a great start. Um, we last night I got the tree survey for Wisteria Avenue for um, that you had requested to look at that side path. So uh, Dave and Tom and I met this morning, uh, talked about it a little bit, um, and Tom and I went out there and looked at it after Tom left. I actually went back and I walked through the entire center of the fence row. So at any rate, uh, it's uh, time to have a conversation about Wisteria Avenue. That is something that um, I would recommend adding to your agenda this evening.
Okay, um, I would like to put it between after item eight.
We should accept the agenda with every vision.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Uh, many further discussion on the agenda? If not, we'll call the question all in favor say aye, aye, opposed, no? Um, one note we should have here when Taran is absent with notice. Okay, uh, minutes from our last meeting is next item.
Chair, I have a couple of minor items, I think on page one, uh, item six doc, uh, under debt ordinance. The commission has discussed two recommendations submitted by Weiss, I think that might be the.
Yes.
Okay, and then on the page two, uh, item ten. Item C, um. Staff reported how township intent to plan notice. So we clean that up a little bit with, I think that's master plan notice. But maybe there needs to be more there.
Yeah, I'm, I think intent to plan is correct, but. I think that's their official phrase is intent to plan.
Intent to plan notice.
Yeah, it, it, it is the official, we can add some verbiage to make it clearer. Uh, it means that they're planning to make or evaluating a change to uh, their future land use map. I believe, uh, and so they have to notice, um, or their zoning map. At any rate, they have to notice, just like you would for a master plan, but it's a smaller change.
Yeah, can we add that? But it, what that plan to intent uh, is specific to, thank you. Um, and then this uh, line below that, uh, Weiss reported note applicants needed for ZBA. Noted at, okay, never mind, that's good.
Okay.
I got it. Thank you.
Sometimes these short phrases are not as clear as they might be any other. Changes. I have one at the top of the page three, first line, it says, uh, food trucks are garage sales not allow at private events. But allow it public neighborhood events. I don't believe that's correct. I believe we said having them at graduation parties, for example, is okay, and that's a private event. Yep, so I would just strike um, not.
Yeah, I think that more have been referring to uh, items like block parties.
But we are, I believe allowing at black parties as long as.
The permission. Yeah, within certain parameters.
Right.
So maybe add a couple of words there about um. Neighborhood events with permission or within certain parameters, something like that.
Well, allow it private events and allow it public neighborhood events with, with approval. Does that work?
Yep.
So it would, it would say um, semicolon, allow at private events and allow at public neighborhood events with approval. And the approval is specified in the actual ordinance. Other changes, corrections? If not. Like a motion to approve. Further discussion, not call the question all in favor of motions, say aye, aye, opposed? Motion passes. All right, next um, item on the agenda is public comment now. I'd like to clarify a couple of things, we have a public comment period tonight. Plus, we have four items on the agenda, which are public hearings. Now, you can speak at the public comment. Doing here, but if you're here to address this particular item, you should. On that item, is that any questions on that? For instance, one of the items is a special use permit for a um, FFL firearms license. If you're going to address that, please do it when we open that public hearing. Okay, secondly, the, when you're speaking here, um, please direct your comments to me, not to anybody in the crowd or something else. Uh, you'll have three minutes to talk. Krista, you're in control, there's a timer over there that will sound eventually, um. It's wonderful to have people here, we love it that our community is involved. Um, we, people have always been very gracious when they come. So that's what I expect from you, address the topic. Be good about it and then um, leave time for others. There should be a sign up sheet usually up there. So we need your name and your address, so we can identify who it was that was speaking. So when you come up, tell us name and address and then speak. I have in the past, and maybe it would make sense to put the sign up sheet on the table over there. So that somebody can sign up before they speak. And um. We can go in that order. Does that make sense? Otherwise we waste a lot of time and. My handwriting is bad enough, and if I have to write fast, it's worse. So with that, I'll open the public comment period. And just a general questions, anybody have just general comments or are you all into a specific item? If there's nobody to speak in the public comment, I'll close the public comment period. Thank you. Um, the next item is a public hearing and a special use permit for a home occupation and a federal firearms license. Maybe a few to introduce it, I think we've uh, read about it, but.
Yes. So this is an application for a home occupation, uh, it is for an FFL oh seven, which is a federal firearms license. There are, I think nine types of FFLs and uh, this one would allow for the sales and as well as the manufacture of firearms. Um, these are typically smaller operations, they've been referred to as kitchen table type operations um, in the past. And something that recently changed in federal law went into effect on May ten. Um, which has extended, uh, the, expanded the number of people who are going to be required to get this license. So um, in the past, there are a few people who are required to get this license than present, than presently. So uh, this may be something that comes up again. Um, Mistress Smoother lives on and in agricultural property, uh, it's a ten acre property. Uh, it is about three hundred and fifty or so feet away from Mike Legends. Um, the intent of the application is to um, sell uh, firearms within his house. Uh, there's not uh, been communicated an intent for any kind of outside activity. Um, we do understand that Mr. Smoother have a uh, like a personal firing range on his property. Uh, and that's something that he is permitted to do, uh, that's not something that is regulated by the township, um. Mr. Martin is here, he can answer some questions, I'm glad to answer questions. Uh, and we also have Deputy Jones here, uh, who can answer some questions if you have questions about things like firing ranges and that sort of thing.
So just to clarify, this is for home occupation, which typically by, just so everybody understands by right. You can do some things such as teach piano. And I think hairdressing is in, included in that. Um, that's about it, your nursing and care, daycare, nursing care.
So there are a handful of home occupations that are permitted by right, meaning that you don't need to come to the planning commission. It's conducted entirely within your home by yourself or one other person. Um, and either no customers are present on site or uh, you fall under a few categories. So daycare, uh, certain kinds of foster care, those, there are state regulations around that, so those are permitted. I am in instruction in fine arts, so things like piano teaching uh, is also permitted by right. Uh, anything that doesn't fall within that category, um, is something that needs to come before the planning commission as a special use, which is what this is here for today.
And one other clarification, so just to make sure everybody's on the same page. This is um, approval is by the planning commission does not go to the board of trustees.
Correct.
So we review and approve or disapprove or approve of conditions at this level. So keep that in mind.
Um, and one other note, I did include on it, one of the many papers on your dais, uh, was a larger copy of uh, the site plan for the property. I apologize that I didn't catch how small that was when it went in the packet, so. Uh, Mistress Smoother is here as well.
Yes. So um, before we have the applicant address the committee, are there other questions? Things you'd like to get straightened, okay, so if the applicant is here.
Good evening, my name is Aaron Swoda, I live with my wife Jennifer at fourteen nine oh one Ransom Street. Uh, we've lived at that address for approximately nine years now. Uh, at the beginning of the year, I applied for a FFL oh seven, uh, due to the changing laws in the state. Uh, I figure I'll start out with, uh, I do have a firing range on my property, uh, it's a personal range, uh, it's approximately. Twenty-five yards, fifty feet wide, I have a, a burn ten feet tall, uh, to catch the rounds. Uh, mostly fire handgun or twenty-two uh, on my range, I don't have a. A license to, to run a gun club and I don't have anyone firing there other than myself, uh. I'm looking to run a business out of my basement, uh. I would not have, I have a full-time job, I'm a technical manager at Transmatic, I work fifty hours a week approximately. I'll leave at five in the morning, get home at four. Uh, according to my FFL paperwork that I filed with the government, I asked for Wednesdays to be my day of operation from. Four to eight PM, so one day a week for four hours, I'm looking to uh. To do transfers, I honestly didn't want to be open to the public, but the. I wa, I would like to do online sales only, but the ATF requires that I do have a day that is open to the public. Uh, I'll have acquisition, acquisitions and depositions book, I will be audited. Uh, for the ATF whenever they feel fit to do so. Uh, and everything that comes in or out, since I have a full-time job will have to be sent to another facility, so I should not have. I would not have drop-offs on my property, I'd have to pick it up at FedEx, the UPS location or the post office, so. Uh, all right, do you guys have any questions for me?
I'm sure there will be, anybody? Um. One of the things that we require in, in the home occupation is that the uh, operation take place totally within the dwelling. And. So you've already said that you fire outside for private reasons. Um, if people come, you're saying people, probably people won't come. To your place to pick up a gun, but if they did, how likely is it that they would want to fire it?
Uh, I, I will not permit anyone to, who, who does do a transfer on my property to use my property to fire a weapon, so.
Yeah.
It would be for transfers only.
Okay, I'm curious. Um. Who sets the rules on the firing range on the property, is that a state? Is that a federal?
For personal property, I believe that would be the, the landowner. In the, the county, you have to have enough property to actively have a.
So the county sets the rules, Dan, do you know that?
Yeah, generally speaking, the, the county would be, i- in this, um, and I apologize if I don't pronounce your name correctly, Smoother.
That's correct.
Yeah, as Mr. Smoother indicated. You, you've got to have enough property to ensure that the discharge of the weapons won't have bullets leaving your property. Essentially, that's why a ten foot called burn.
Yes.
Yeah, so that, that's why he's got the berm behind whatever he's shooting at in order to ensure that the bullets don't leave his property.
Okay.
So the. State law would, would basically prohibit hunting within four hundred and fifty feet of an occupied building. But it doesn't prohibit the discharge of a weapon as long as you can effectively keep it on your property. You can't shoot weapons at buildings, but you can shoot weapons at targets. You can't have your own private range.
Yep.
So yeah, that, that's not something that the township regulates right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, a number of. Firearms establishments have been broken into and guns have been stolen. Do you uh, plan to have inventory on hand? Or are your sales going to be specific to what the customer requests?
Uh, currently I have a gun safe for my personal weapons, I would buy an additional, they're actually called residential security containers, but I would buy an additional gun safe. And keep my weapons separate from the weapons that run through the FFL, so I would have a container to hold weapons and.
And would that container be fully secured?
Yes, it would, and I will be adding additional security, I'll have a security alarm installed at the house too.
And do you plan to sell um. Long barrel arms as well as pistols and revolvers?
Uh, yes, it would be your typical firearms, long arms and pistols.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can you elaborate on local manufacturing, Michael?
Uh, I have, as you had, M- Mika had referred to it, a kitchen table FFL, uh, I do have a pole barn where I have a. A mill and a lathe, I'm on a two hundred and twenty amp service, I'm running fifty amps to my pole barn. I have a uh, ten horsepower phase converter to run my machines, it's basically a, a larger drill press, I'm not set up for. Full-on manufacturing of weapons, but I applied for the type seven license because it would give me the opportunity to do gunsmithing on weapons. So I'm not looking to make weapons, but I would like to be able to do repairs or alterations.
Any else? Go ahead.
Uh, as gunsmither, then you would have uh, people bringing their weapons as well as. Leaving them with you to be uh, repaired and then we, obviously we'd pick them up, so you'd have that kind of traffic, is that correct?
Uh, yes, on Wednesdays from four to eight, people could drop off weapons and I could repair them and they could pick them up after. They were repaired.
Okay, thank you.
Would you be willing to do it by appointment only? So that there's not more than two, three, four people in the operation of one tent?
Uh, yeah, I've, I've been using uh, mountain top type FFLs personally, uh, that's typically how it goes. You make an appointment with somebody, so you don't have multiple people on the property. Uh, everything is subject to a federal background check. So it takes approximately twenty to thirty minutes to transfer a firearm, so yes, I would not like to have multiple people there at the same time.
Question? Okay, um. Yes.
Yeah, can you, can you just go through, I know the ATF is going to do an inspection once you're established, that correct?
That's correct.
Can you kind of share with us what that inspection might look like and what, what they will be looking for in terms of? The security and uh, what, what, what things will they be actually inspecting?
Uh, to be hon, to be honest with you, I am not one hundred percent sure what will happen. I know the first time they are coming, they're looking to sit down at the kitchen table and talk through things. Uh, I was required to get an acquisitions and depositions book. Uh, I'm sure they will check out the property to make sure it's secure and everything meets their standards, but. I can't speak as to what they will require.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
In your application, um, there was a. You would facilitate online sales of firearms. Can you explain what there is, I think I know, but if you didn't.
Uh, right, good.
I've only, uh, there's a website called Gun Broker, that is a primary website that most people use to buy and sell firearms. So it's an auction style website that you can put a set price or you can have an auction for a, oh, weapon that you're looking to sell a firearm.
So kind of like eBay?
Basically, yes.
Yeah. Well, I mean, Reverb is a site for musical equipment, I assume it's like that too also, um. When you're facilitating, would you, is part of it also checking, uh, getting background checks and that kind of thing?
Uh, I know when you ship out as, as an FFL, you send your paperwork from your FFL to another FFL. To facilitate the transfer, uh, when you receive a gun, uh, there is a federal background check if someone were to pick it up, so yes.
Okay. And you help with the background checks and stuff?
Correct.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you and. We may call on you again. Um. I have a question, this is kind of for staff. If the home occupation is supposed to be totally within the dwelling. And Mr. Smoother is looking at using his machining equipment in the barn to do manufacturing, does that count as within the dwelling?
Um, I will review the language of the ordinance while you have your public hearing and discuss, um, Mr. Martin might be able to weigh in on that. But I think because this was a special use, that that might be something that is um, open to him.
Correct, okay, the subsection two of the home occupation. Provisions specifically provide that if a special use meets two conditions, it is permitted by right. The one is that you talked about the crafting of fine art like piano lessons, drawing, painting lessons, uh, daycare. That's one of the two things that could be met, he does not meet that. The second condition for being permitted by right is the requirement that it all be conducted entirely within the dwelling. Not necessarily a garage barn, et cetera. That's to be permitted by right, as a special use, you've got the standards that you'll be considering after the public hearing, but it doesn't specifically require. That it be within the dwelling, you could make a condition that it be within. The dwelling or the pole barn and not being conducted outside as, as Mr. Smoother indicated, he is not going to be permitted, anyone who buys a gun from him. To use his shooting range, so that could be one of the conditions you impose. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions before we go to the public hearing portion? All right. With that, I uh. I believe we need a motion to open the public here, I know we need a motion to close, I'm sorry on this procedural issue.
I would have to look it up, so I shouldn't make a motion, it would be safe.
Right, so I'd like a motion to open the public hearing, please. Second, Mr. Cardinal, Mr. Louise. All right, we have the public hearing now. Um, we typically will start in some area and work our way around. So today, start. Close second row here on the right. Anybody in the second row care to comment on this subject?
Jerry Brewer, one four nine five six New Holland Street, live right behind Aaron and Jen. Back they bought our house, our their house from us. Um, I really, I don't have any problem with what he, Aaron's doing. Um, I can hear him every now and then, maybe shooting a little bit. But um, no concern for a part of I'm very concerned, so.
Okay, and did you get your name on the?
No, yeah, but I'll put it down here.
Okay, thank you. Next row, starting on my right, your left. Anybody in that row care to comment? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Hack. I'm at four five four nine Harkemus Creek Drive. I moved here two years ago and started hearing, shooting quite a bit. Uh, my husband tried to convince me that it was backfiring in the truck. But um, it ended up that it was confirmed when the Russes came by to speak about this um new endeavor. That that actually was a firing range and that was never disclosed. And my concern is that there's an incompatibility going on here between what he wants to do and what's happening in this area. There's an expansion of neighborhoods, families, and it um is very concerning to me. I feel um very concerned about some people going in. I don't know who's going to be coming in and how that's going to happen. And what things could possibly happen. And so I'm here to object to him having that kind of a business out of his home. I hear the shooting a lot. It triggers me. It it makes me frightened. So there you go.
Thank you. Um, anybody else in that room? If not, the next row back.
Good evening, uh, my name is Todd Seitzma. I'm from three nine four three one hundred and forty eighth Avenue. So roughly just over half a mile south of the Smuta's property. So I had some questions about how many visits to the business, say, in a particular month? Much traffic are we expecting to see? My wife and I walk down that particular stretch of one forty eighth to ransom every night. And uh. We notice increased traffic, that whole area due to additional. Um, residences being built is becoming more busy. Especially down Quincy. So it's just an interest of mine. Is this going to add to? An additional, you know, any additional uh traffic to that area? That's not necessarily meant for business.
Okay, yeah.
So, question, how many visits can we expect? Um, I own uh some things legally. I'm looking into a shooting range myself.
I hope they're not illegally owned.
Yeah, that would be problematic. So, um, so I've been looking into this myself. I have three acres and would like to become proficient even more so. With my firearms. So I understand this. I've looked into some of the rules and regulations for having a shooting range on my property. So I get that. My question is, is there a raised platform? In Mr. Smuta's. Um, shooting range? That minimizes the chance of the stray bullet ricocheting off the top of a pile. If you're shooting from a raised platform down into the earth. It's going to minimize any stray bullet. And any of you that have some firearms experience. Just a twenty-two bullet can travel over a mile. We have more and more children moving into the area, especially being close to West Ottawa High School. I'd say that's less than a mile. As curl flies from this property. Um, I would encourage you to look into that. We're in a school district. So here's the high school. Within very close proximity to. More guns, okay, and I'm not against guns, don't get me wrong, okay? So, um, I one last question is. This FFL, as I read it, includes manufacture of ammunition. Okay, or sales, okay? If there's a. Ordinance or regulation or special. Um, understanding that no ammunition is included with the firearms that are being fired, uh, that are being sold. We may not have a problem here. If they can't load the gun. When it's being transferred, it won't be fired. So just a, just a thought.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Thank you.
All right, we're over. I'm going to continue in the back row on this side going across. And if you would pull the mic down a little bit, that would be. Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Where was the beef?
My name, my name is Donna Russ. I am a neighbor to Mr. Smuta. First of all, I want everybody to know that I love my neighborhood and I want to keep it safe. I have lived there for forty-nine years. I know this request from Mr. Smuta is not in the home occupation section of the Code of Ordinance. Which does not even allow a homeowner to do body, automobile body repair or engine repair. And that's not even a dangerous business. I guess no one ever thought that selling guns and ammunition in a residential neighborhood would ever be happening. I know I didn't. My property is only three hundred and thirty feet from the Smuta's property. My driveway is on the same side of the road as theirs. My house is back off the road, just like theirs. And I also have a driveway that goes to the back of my house with a walkout basement. And an out, excuse me, and an outside entry door, just like the Smuta's house, where he wants to run a business out of. Who's to say that someone won't accidentally end up? At my house, wanting to buy a gun, or even worse, maybe steal some guns. More than likely, a bad person will come along someday. I will end this. End with this, the word enhance means to make greater, more desirable, more attractive. This request of Mr. Smuta does not enhance the neighborhood or make it safe, safer. It tears a neighborhood down. If a business like this is allowed to come into my neighborhood, I am going to be very concerned about my safety. So neighbors, let's all come together and keep our neighbor safe and the future of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Steve Russ, four 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 zero, one hundred and forty eighth Avenue. My name is Steve Russ and I own property right next to Aaron Smuta's residence. My land is vacant, it's dormant, and it's quiet, and it's been that way for thirty years. So I'm going to keep my comments short so that other people who have homes in the neighborhood can speak. I am opposed to this request from Aaron Smuta to be allowed to sell firearms and ammunition from his home. A residential neighborhood is not an appropriate place for that type of business. Firearms and ammunition sales should be in a commercial area where people do not live. You should not be mixing a firearms business with a family's day to day life and having both of those things happening under the same roof. It increases the chances of something going terribly wrong. In the Park Township Code of Ordinances, section thirty-eight dash four eight eight, titled Control of Heat, Glare, Fumes. Dust, Noise, Vibration, and Odors, it says the following. Every use shall be so conducted and operated that it is not obnoxious or dangerous. By reason of heat, glare, fumes, odors, dust, noise, or vibration. Beyond the lot on which the use is located. Could this home based business even fulfill the conditions laid out in that ordinance? We don't know yet because it has not been disclosed if the guns that are sold will be shot on sight. That may be a whole other issue for a whole other meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next across the back row.
My name is Kurt. My name is Kurt Russ. I live at forty-three seventy-four, one hundred and forty eighth. And I don't know if I could come up with a worse business. To be dumped into a neighborhood. In the environment we live.
None of that, thank you.
So if the township is all about neighborhood safety and sense of security. You need to just stop this request. And he can go to the area he belongs in, commercial, industrial, retail. And if that environment invites him in, I'm all for it. And I'm just saying this as a hunter and a gun owner on this street.
Thank you, thank you. Next going across in the back. If not, up to the next row on the right, anybody in that row? If not, I think we're up to the front row on this side. Okay, yes. Sure.
I'm Karen Borum and I live at one four five six zero Georgian Bay in McHale Legends. And we just moved in the end of October.
Hold the mic down just a little bit.
We moved in and at the end of October, we're big golfers, we love the community, that's why we built a home there. Um, we previously lived in Mergold Woods, which is beautiful, and we're pro-gun, pro all that. Um, our concern is we've heard that stray bullets have reached the golf course. And to think that you could be hit by stray bullet golfing is a little absurd to me. Um. A couple other questions is, when was the last inspection done by the county's property? And a ten foot berm, in my opinion, isn't that big? And I think the previous gentleman's comment about having a platform shooting down makes sense. But has anybody seen his property?
Okay.
And will you see it before you prove it? What we inspected, how often, who inspected it last? Stray bullets have hit the golf course. So that's our concern.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not a public speaker, so I'm very nervous right now. Oh, I am very friendly myself. I just don't speak in front of crowds. So, um, anyways, it was brought to our attention by the ladies on our street. I live forty-five thirty-one Harkemus Creek Drive. So right when it turns into Georgian Bay to Harkemus Creek. So, um, it was brought to our attention that one of our neighbors, her son found a bullet in his front yard. And not to say that that's where it came from, but it potentially could have because we hear gunshots often. Um, my question with the berm as well, ten feet is not that high. And is a berm, is that just like a line of trees? What is it? What exactly is a berm? Is it a wall?
Well, just to clarify, I assume it's a pile of dirt. Is that correct? So you dug it down? Okay.
Can a bullet ricochet off of that and go, because it has been on, I mean, bullets have been. On the golf course in front of us. So we built and moved in a year ago, year and a half ago. And had we known that this was going to be in our backyard, I guarantee you we would not have built there. There's a lot of young families. I mean, not to say the age doesn't matter because a bullet's going to find their location, right? So my concern is that this should not be happening.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Anybody else? If not, I'd like a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
What's that? Should it be quick?
Um, if somebody was to purchase a gun, how and why would they purchase it without firing?
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion to close the public hearing. Court by Ms. Trowa, any further discussion? If not, call a question on favor, say aye, aye, opposed, no. Public hearing is closed and thank you all for your comments. All right, now we get to talk. I think the best thing we can do, there are a bunch of standards which have to be met to. Um, allow a special use, staff has gone through and commented on them. I'd like to go through them one by one. So. Uh, would you like to lead that discussion? We have a lot of paper. We do have a lot of paper. Well, I can start.
And Mr. Chair, you have the special use review as well as the home occupation.
Okay. Clarify, I'm sorry, clarify that for me.
So the special use has review standards, uh, they're on page three, and then the home occupation standards are on, begin on page four.
Yep, okay. So we'll start with the special use review. Um, you may have it in front of you, I hope. The quote number one. It says overall, the planning commission shall review the particular circumstances and facts of each proposed special use in terms of the following standards and required findings. And with respect to any additional standards set forth in zoning districts and general provisions herein. Planning Commission shall find adequate evidence showing that the proposed proposed use on the proposed lot generally satisfies the following. And number one will be harmonious and in accordance with the objectives, intent, and purposes of this chapter. And staff's comments as the standard is met. Can you expand on that a little bit, please?
Yeah, the the chapter is the entirety of the zoning chapter. Um, and so it appears. But finally, um, when we're looking at special use in a home occupation, you're primarily looking at the impact that it has on the neighborhood. Um, you know, we've talked about firing ranges and things like that, but he's not here asking for special use for a firing range. That's something that is permitted on his property. It's just, you know, one of your constitutional rights and something that you're permitted to do um by the laws of the state and the county. Um, so what we're we're looking is the very specific business that he is seeking to run. Um, and when we're looking at a home occupation, you're primarily looking to see what type of disruption it may or may not create in the neighborhood. You really don't want it to have um more of an impact on the neighborhood than a general residential use would have. So, uh, when I said the standard is met, it seems to me that with the volume of traffic, uh, with the amount of space that's there. Uh, that the number of people coming and going wouldn't be any more than, say, a family that has some teenagers who are driving. Uh, and so that was, that was my thought behind, um, why I think you know standard had been met.
Thank you. Any discussion, questions on that?
But hey, just just a comment in that regard in traffic. If you don't put for four hours a day. For one day, and there's a minimum of a half hour, forty-five minutes to transact the business. We're talking about four or five, maybe six people once a week during a period of four to eight. During a period of four hours.
Yeah.
So I don't think traffic increases is a significant issue.
And it doesn't, um, as I understand it, you'll be picking things up, you said, from FedEx or UPS rather than having them delivered, is that correct?
Yeah, he has, he has to do that by ATF.
Because we get, you know, on our home occupations, we had a rule about how many trucks and step vans you could come every day. But no matter where you live, Amazon is. But no matter where you live, Amazon is there multiple times a day. So that, that has changed. Okay, item two, will be compatible with the natural environment and existing and future land uses in the vicinity. Staff's comment, standard is met. Would be conducted inside an existing structure and would not be expected to affect the natural environment. Or nearby land uses at all. That's the thing about this business. Um, three, will be compatible with the township master plan. Um, the standard is met, a home occupation with limited traffic is compatible with uses envisioned in the rural estates residential area. This is, I thought you, we sort of realized was ag, I'm sorry.
Yes, you're correct. It is ag. That was near.
Yep, that is ag. But that's. It's compatible with that too. And any of these.
The rural estates residential would be compatible to what is in the, the Legends, McAtell Legends. Which is the neighborhood that's just to the. Northeast, right?
Rural Estates is two acre minimum.
Right.
And did we make those two acre minimum?
They're pretty close to that.
They're a little shy of.
We, they average out of two acres is what we did with.
They don't average out at two acres. I think that it was, um, the P U D, you can, as long as you meet the, uh, the density of the underlying zoning district. And so they're between, like, I think they're, the smallest one might be eight tenths of an acre and then, and then they go up to about one and a half or two.
Yep.
Thank you.
And therefore will be served adequately by essential public facilities and services such as bin Laden, to do highway, streets, police, fire, drainage, structures, refuges. Unless the person agency is responsible, uh, we'll be able to provide adequately any such service. And there's nothing exceptional going on there. Five, will not be detrimental, hazardous, or disturbing to existing and future neighboring uses persons' property or the public welfare. And staff's comment is the standard is expected to be met. The volume of customers should not be detrimental to or disturb the neighborhood. Fire names regulation is largely preempted by federal and state law. And, uh, federal firearms licenses must comply with licensing, inspection, and other regulations at both levels. And I think what we're looking at is, is what we've discussed is that the. Occupation will take place totally within the existing structure. And nothing will be going on outside. Uh, he does have a firing range, but that would not be used by any of the customers. Questions on that? Good. Um, six, will not create additional requirements at public cost for public facilities and services. Um, standard is met. Any questions on the special use review standards? As with going through those, I believe at this point. We've covered the basis for a special use permit. This next section is on home occupation requirements. I have a comment when we get there. This section is designed to permit home occupations as an accessory use to a residential dwelling. While helping to regulate and control traffic, parking, noise, advertising, diminished aesthetics. And noxious orders that could otherwise negative effect residential neighborhoods. So. This is, um, one A. Thirty-eight, five oh six, one A, the home occupation shall be permitted. An accessory used to a residential dwelling in the. R one, two, three, four, et cetera. So this is an egg requirement met. B, a home occupation shall not alter the residential character of the dwelling in which it is operated. The character of the property on which the dwelling is erected. More the character of the neighborhood in which the property is located. And, um, staff has responded, requirement expected to be met. Uh, this way still have a further comment on that?
Uh, yeah, that was one that I thought you might want to discuss. Um, it seems that, you know, it. As I go through any other standards, um, it doesn't seem that it's going to alter the character. Um, but the nature of the business, which is one of the ones that's going to come, um, come up below. Uh, you know, I, there are questions about that that have come to the neighbor, from the neighborhood. And so that's something that if you wanted to discuss whether that, whether that, um, fit under that umbrella, uh, that's the reason why it was expected to be met.
So I believe that would be, um, from the introductory part. Well, helping to regulate and control traffic, parking, noise, advertising, aesthetics, odors. And if it doesn't affect one of those. Any questions or comments on that? Their agreement that it meets that standard?
I would say it does.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, we'll carry on. Um, C, no signage for home occupation or other structures of any kind related to the conduct of the home occupation. Shall be permitted on the property, property as except as otherwise may be specifically authorized by this chapter. And this one staff's comment is requirement is not met. The application indicates that business hours sign will be posted on the exterior of the home and that would need to be removed. I am, um.
Indicated that he was not going to put a sign.
He put it on the inside of the door, magnetic glass door. Facing out, but you have the gun exterior.
And no advertising, just the hours. Hold on a sec. When I'm reminded, just so everybody knows, I don't, I guess this is about as good a place to stick it in as any. We had. A person who was selling jewelry and artwork and stuff out of her home down by the state park. It's like, think two houses off Iowa Beach Road. And we made her take everything back in the house because. That's what the ordinance says, so. That's pretty low impact other than it affects the neighborhood and you have people, you know, everybody walking off of Ottawa Beach Road to buy things and that probably. Changed the neighborhood more than this may. All right. Um, a home occupation shall not include any type of motor vehicle or automobile repair. Et cetera, requirements met. Because he's not going to do that. And we're to thirty-five oh six three, the nature of the home occupation. Um, staff's comments, planning, the commission may wish to discuss whether this standard is met. Neighbors have questioned whether it's a firm's, a business is appropriate. We certainly heard that tonight. From a zoning perspective, however, the primary question is whether expected traffic, noise, et cetera, would be detrimental to the surrounding area. Discussion, I'd like to hear comments, please. Or. If I will, but. We've already discussed traffic that will be minimal change. Noise, um. There will be no outside shooting related to the business. And. The noise that's already there is already permitted and not under our control. I believe that standard is met. Their general agreement? Dennis?
I have a question about that.
Good.
At some point he decides. Put an indoor range in. Um, twenty-five feet, he could accommodate that. Um, would that? Suggest potential noise.
I don't know. I don't know about these things, but I would, I would think it would be less noise than the outdoor shooting range.
Yeah, if, if he wanted to put an indoor range in, that's not something that's under the umbrella of this home occupation request. So that would be, that would change the business enough, especially you could, you could specify that as well as a condition. That, that would require an additional approval. It's not typical, based on my understanding, to try out these weapons when you're buying them. It's not like trying on shoes. I get some asking around, I'm not a gun person, so I rely on expertise of people around me. And it sounds like that, that's not a normal thing that you would do. You know what you want, you're, you're picking it up.
Okay, good question. Um, the next section, B, the nature of the surrounding neighborhood. Again, standard may be met, it's located in A, it's ten acres. Um, there are a handful of non-conforming parcels. Nearest neighborhoods is McAtell Legend approximately three hundred and forty feet from property line to property line, right? So further from house to house.
I, uh, if I may, I've got, uh, and I'm not sure who to direct this to or whether it's just general conversation. Um. I think we've heard Mr. Smuta has got, has built the berm and it sounds like that has been, from your perspect, again, it. From his perspective, that's been sufficient to be able to stop bullets, yet we've heard from. A number of folks that are here in communications, it came to us that they found stray bullets on the golf course. I don't think we have. Direct proof of that. I don't think we've seen pictures of it. But. Is there anything else that can be done or should, does the commission think there should be something else done? To be able to keep bullets in that area? Now, this doesn't, again, this doesn't impinge on. Right to own those. I'm just wondering if there's any, anything else from a safety perspective. That could also provide some additional comfort to the, to the neighboring neighborhood, uh, the adjacent neighborhoods.
That's a good question.
Well, it is. But I think it, it plays into the decision that we're being asked to make.
Right, but. I don't think this is moving the whole shooting up there. I mean, there is a lot of ag that surrounds McAtell Estates.
But he is, he is the only person asking to open a business there, which would, which would add. Traffic, but not impact his use of the property.
But whether we prove this or deny it. No matter what happens, he can still shoot.
Of course.
The neighbors, which there's no evidence that that bullet came from this property.
Yeah, I mean.
I know for a fact.
Okay, and you, you may have more familiarity. That's helpful.
Joining property where they're shooting and everything going on.
Okay, that's helpful. Mr. Martin?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if, if I may. Remember that you look at page one of the memo. And Mika put, uh. Two different pictures of, of the property there, one. Coverage both on the subject property and the property immediately to the east in between the property and McAtell Legends. If I may ask Mr. Smuta a question. Does your private firing range, does it run east, west, north, south? How, how does it run on the property?
McAtell Legends is far, far east or higher ages.
Okay, and so, I mean, if you look at that with, with respect. All due respect, if, if he's firing to the north and, and McAtell Legends, as it appears in the depiction. That is in your staff memo is to the north. There appear to be a lot of trees both on his property and then the properties immediately east. On that legend. Before you get to the golf course. So I'm, I'm not, you know, a forensic scientist or anything, but, but I find it very difficult to believe that. If he's firing on his range. Even if there's a ricochet, that it's traversing his property's trees, the adjoining neighbor properties, trees. And making it all the way to the golf course. Notwithstanding that, as Dave has pointed out. The special use in front of you is not related to him with his private firing range. Whether he had a special use request or not, he's going to be permitted to do the firing range.
Absolutely.
And I'm sure it's in his own best interest too, to make sure that it's safe because he doesn't want to get charged with negligent homicide.
Right. Thank you. Yep, good input, thank you.
Any other questions on three B? C is the effect of the home occupation on the surrounding neigh- neighborhood. The standard expected to be met, expected to be a low volume transfer point, so. It won't be much going on. Mika, um, I think you said you would ask law enforcement if there was any record of.
Yes, and there is not. There was, um, one call that was asking about gunshots on the property. It was inquiring into that and was, of course, Mr. Smuta on his, um, on his own property, but there were no other. Nothing else, uh, that popped up in the area. There were no, no reports, uh, in this surrounding area related to that.
Thank you. Um, D, the environmental effects of the home occupation. Wouldn't expect it to have any environmental effect. But the customers conduct business on the property, on the premises. Um, they will. So staff's comment is firearms transfers are required to take place in person and on a license premises. So customers will at times be present on site. It's not a high volume of business. And given the distance, um, it would not be expected to be a nuisance. It wouldn't have. People filing in and out all day. Questions on that? Comments? Um, F, potential traffic congestion. And staff's comment is standard is met, and I think we've reviewed that multiple times. And provision of parking for traffic or clientele that may result from the operation of the home occupation. Um, the standard is met in the parcel. Or proposed home occupation take place as driveway area setback from the street inadequate for occasional customer use. And that's, there's a separate garage and then there are two parking places in front of it, right? So. We've done, those are all the special, um, use review standards. And the home occupation standards and would appear the request meets all of those standards. I do have, um. Member of law enforcement here, would you like to address this issue? Do you have any particular comments? Okay. Thank you. So. Now we're to discussion. And. Staff comments and recommendation. From, if the planning commission determines that approval is appropriate, staff recommends the following conditions. And I think we've maybe come up with a few in addition to these, so as we go through them, let's. Agree on, um. Whether we agree or not. Um, first one seems obvious, applicant must maintain any and all required and appropriate licensing at the state and federal level at all times. I don't think there's any question on that one. Applicant must maintain compliance with any and all state and federal requirements for securing weapons, ammunition, and any other regulated. Regulated goods at all times. Again, I don't think there's a question on there. By some connection with the operational stop rate there. Um. And I think we've done over this. And Mr. Smuta has said that that's the case. Um. I'll continue with the operation and business on the property. So I think the question was asked, um, if people come and want to try out guns. Too bad. Can't do it. Everybody agrees, good fit. Um, no business signage permitted, and I think we've already gone over that. Um, I think an hour's sign, but not a Smuto's gunsmithing sign or something. Is appropriate, and if all the appointments are being made online, you can communicate your address. And how to get there, right? I assume that's what you're thinking.
Yeah, if I can make a comment to that. Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, I think that no. Business signage is a little bit more restrictive than it needs to be. Uh, I've, I've been on the property, spent half hour on the property reviewing the land as well as the location. As you're going to put the, the business in. It's be kind of behind the house and to the side of the house.
Yep.
Uh, I wouldn't be opposed to him having a sign that directs people to that lower level. So that they know, once you get on your property, where it's at, you know, I would not be. So that they know, once you get on your property, where it's at, and I would not be opposed for him posting hours on his door, so that when they get there, they know it, but I, 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 I can't imagine that he's not going to have appointments, but, but nonetheless, I'd like to relax that signage a little bit if we can.
So I may comment if the sign, I believe, I think you made a good comment. I believe that was to stop neighborhoods from having business signs.
Sure.
If this sign is, I don't know how many, you're quite a few hundred feet back off the road. If this sign was at the house and invisible from any other property, I don't know how it would cause a problem.
That would be my position also.
Yeah. Get out your binoculars.
But if we could write that to the point where it's specific enough that we know where, where that sign can be, that it's, you know, kind of direction.
Would a simple statement like not visible from other properties be sufficient? Does that seem reasonable to you? Okay, I mean, that's pretty, I think that's pretty enforceable. Any other ones that somebody has made note of, any other conditions?
I'd still like to have the commission consider customer visits by appointment only.
Okay.
Applicant knows the name of the person who's coming and when. I don't think he has an opportunity to bet them ahead of time, but he certainly won't be surprised. And I'm thinking more of the person who shows up with two or three buddies with him. And, you know, that's not acceptable. So I would suggest the applicant consider making that concession.
Okay. Another thing that staff have asked, we'd like to add conditions such as maximum number of customers on site at one time. More than zero. One or more than one, I guess is the question.
I think more than one. I think anything less is sufficient.
So two at a time?
I mean, this isn't, this isn't the retail all that.
How many cars would you expect at one time? Yeah, that's kind of what I was guessing.
I think you indicated too, that there's a lot of paperwork that has to be filled out, so you wouldn't want more than one person in there.
Well, I go, she's going to drive, I'm going to drive, I'm going to have two cars there, and we're both going to well, get our weapons, you know, and so. Yeah, my car is, I think, so, you know, maybe per customer or something.
So. If we go that route, that should be sufficient, because then he knows what to expect. And he can choose to manage, but if there's that much paperwork, I wouldn't expect him to have a large group.
Okay. I don't know how we regulate that.
I'm a little bit with David, that I think he'll regulate that.
So adding a requirement, not putting a maximum number, but putting in by appointment only. People comfortable with, okay?
I think we mentioned indoor firing range would be reviewable by if that was a decision. No, if it was, I think it was brought up, that if that was a decision to be made, so make sure people can hear you.
Sorry, yeah. I think one of the other things we had talked about was if there was a future decision to add an indoor firing range, that that would be something that would be reviewable by the planning commission at that point.
Yeah, that's not part of this request, so that wouldn't be permitted.
Right.
Yeah.
Aside from his own personal use.
Correct.
And as an indoor firing range, that would be an accessory building, and an accessory building has to meet certain standards, and I think there's already one on the property, so there would be some things to look at there too.
Mr. Chairman, do we need to address the fact that he's going to be manufacturing in a barn? Do we need to have that as a condition that it's the operation is just done in those two, those two structures?
I would like to have that clarified as part of the motion. Specifically, do you have a comment? No.
No, I'm just ready.
So we discussed it earlier, but normally it takes place within the dwelling, but this would be in the pole barn, but we believe that's allowed, right?
Uh, yes, you, if you wanted to add more than that, and Mr. Martin might jump in on this. You could say customers only within the office structure of the house. And you may do other activities also inside within the pole barn or something along those lines.
That makes sense. Yeah, that's good, that's a good way to go. I like that, so. Mr. Martin, to clarify, is the license, the special use transferable on sale of property?
The special use runs with the land. The license is not. My understanding is you are licensed, your wife's not, so if anybody buys the property from him in order for them to continue operating this particular special use, they would have to have the FFL license as well. Which he can't transfer, that's going to be something up to ATF to grant. So it's, it's not within your control, it's not within his control, but if he transfers the property, that special use is there. But it would not be permitted under federal law unless the person is licensed by the federal authorities.
And they have to abide by all strictures we set here.
Correct, all the conditions.
I have a general question on that, if I may.
Sure.
Once a special use permit is established on a specific parcel, can the commission retract that at any point?
If, if the conditions for the approval are violated, yes. But otherwise, no.
Okay.
The, the only time you put like a time constraint on it would be, for example, the Ottawa County Fair, where you know that's just one week in time. And so every year, once a week, you can have a fair type of thing. But otherwise, you're not putting sunset provisions on special use requests. They, they run with the land and they stay permanent as long as they're complying with the conditions.
Thank you. So for example, if we were to find that a customer had taken a gun and gone out to his shooting range and fired it, he could lose his permit.
His special use.
His special use permit, so you're clear on that. And I don't think that's, that's law, we don't have to add it to this approval.
Correct.
Any other items, conditions, comments? Mika, have you been taking good notes?
I think so.
Could you read us?
Yes.
I would like to have a motion, I believe you will read it, and somebody needs to take credit for the motion at some point.
Tell me to read the conditions.
I would like.
The applicant must maintain any and all required and appropriate licensing at the state and federal level at all times. Applicant must maintain compliance with any and all state and federal requirements for securing weapons, ammunition, and any other regulated goods at all times. There may be no discharge of firearms in connection with the operation of the business on the property. Business signage may not be visible from outside properties. All business will be conducted by appointment only. Customers will be met in the office within the house. Other activities, including manufacturing, may take place in the interior of the pole barn.
Within the house only.
Only, within the house only.
Just to specifically exclude other places.
Yep.
All right, Mr. Cappano? Let's wait for the second first. Do we have a second on the motions?
Yeah, I have a question for Mr. Smuta.
Yeah.
You understand the conditions that we're placing on this, are you in agreement with those?
I have a further question, you're comfortable that when you're manufacturing and repairing weapons, that the person, the customer would not be able to be in that barn with you, are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
Because in my experience of being with a gunsmith in a neighborhood home, I was there with him actually observing him do the repair before I returned, before I received a weapon back, so I was right there with him and, and, you know, and and, and we're measuring, and we're doing all those type of things together in, in the facility where he's doing the manufacturing. So especially with gun stocks, where you're increasing the, increasing the length of it to get it to the right length and this sort of thing. Not having a customer there seems to me to be a little bit difficult to do that.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. It, it would be preferred if I could have a customer in the pole barn. Like you're talking about provisions or whatnot. It would be something that this would it would be nice if you gave that provision, or I could have said customer with said firearm in the pole barn as well. But I would not, I would not store any firearms there.
Correct.
My personal opinion based on, you know, my own personal experiences with, with gunsmiths and everything, I, I don't see a reason why we would exclude customers being in the manufacturing, being in the barn.
Okay, so that would be a change to the motion if we get there. I have a question. Dan, are there any legal problem with that? Since our home occupation says it has to be within the home.
Yeah, the home occupation says, so let me, let me go back to that again. That is for something that would be permitted as of right. Not for something that would be permitted as a special use. So it's not like a requirement that all home occupations have to have everything done within the dwelling.
Okay.
Those home occupations that are typically home occupations, like piano lessons, have to be done within the dwelling.
So within a special use, we could allow that.
Could allow, yes.
Okay, thank you. Further conversation. Questions. Then we would have to change the motion. And which requires the motion maker and the seconder to acquiesce.
So strictly the condition that customers would only be permitted within the office, within the house.
Can you, can you read that? Right, yeah, I would like. Not just anywhere.
So customers customers may be served within the interior of the office of the house and the pole barn.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Or the manufacturing area. So. Okay. On the floor, any further discussion?
I'd just like to make a couple of comments, by me. I, I, I think we've done a good job delineating the difference between the fact that it's a commercial business in a home that's selling weapons, fixing weapons and selling ammunition, and the difference between that and the privacy of the range itself. Regarding stray bullets and the, and the berm and this sort of thing on the privacy of his home is, is a nuisance for the noise. We all understand that, but he does have that right. I think if it gets to the point where the neighbors are disgruntled about that, that they can make formal complaint to that, to that effect, because it's excessive noise and this sort of thing. In regards to stray bullets, they can come from anywhere, and I think Mr. Martin is, is right on track when I was on the property and looking at the berm. I think the berm could be a little more enhanced personally, but between the berm and the amount of trees that are on those properties, a stray bullet's going to find one of those trees. That said, I live in the woods and I have a bullet hole in a casement window about an inch away from coming through the window in my living room. Where that came from, we have no clue. Could have been shot in the air. My bullet is on a direct angle, so it missed all the trees and it came through, and it can happen, but the bullet that potentially, or the bullet that's potentially on the golf course that's been found, that could have come from who knows where, mile away, oh, yeah, and somebody shot a bullet in the air and it went there. I think he's got a pretty significantly safe range or berm and range. I've been on numerous private ranges. And the berms do a phenomenal job of, of absorbing the bullet when it's discharged, so I think the biggest issue that neighbors will have is the nuisance, is the nuisance of noise. And, and hopefully that's retained to privacy and, and not overextended.
Okay, I have a few comments or questions from the audience earlier from the public, how much traffic, I think we've addressed that issue. There's a question about having a raised platform for safety, which that helps, that would be great, but not under our control. A question about limiting ammunition sales. We didn't talk about that at this point. I'll get back to it. There's a question about neighborhoods accidentally visiting, but if he's making appointments, there's a very good he can easily communicate address and how to get there and so on, I don't see a problem with that. Inspections, the ATF is going to inspect commonly, so I think that should be good. If we get complaints, we can inspect. Ammunition sales, any comments? You need ammunition to run guns. You can buy ammunition. Are you planning, by the way, are you going to be packing bullets?
Planning to produce ammunition or sell ammunition. As a, as a private FFL, I could actively be without my sale basis. Or anything like that, people could have.
I, I actually understood that somewhere there's a vending machine for ammo now. Yeah, seriously, yeah. I don't remember, I saw it somewhere a week ago or so. So I think the ammunition is probably not an issue. Any other comments? Any other comments? Correct, okay. With that, I'll call the question and let's do a roll call starting over here. On the motion.
Yes.
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 And chair votes, yes, so the motion passes and you have your special use permit.
Thank you.
And thank you to everybody who came here and commented. Does anybody leave a short break?
This is what the use is, this is what's happening on this property and just kind of lining it up with where our current ordinances are would be the appropriate. Would be the appropriate route to take to seek approval of this civilian.
Okay, and the association owns this parcel?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. Any quick questions here?
I have a quick question for me. How is this parcel zone? R two, so it's not zoned as private? Open space or private park?
It's not, it's zoned as R two, yes.
We may want to think about doing that at some point in time.
To do what?
Change the zoning of the park itself to private park, just like what? Okay, rather than this rather than residential.
Okay.
And that may be a request that the.
Yeah, and.
And that may be a request the association may want to consider doing, making a request for that.
Mm hmm.
Uh, that way it wouldn't ever get built on.
Okay, thank you. Yep, kind of, and I would not get to be called and back to our guy. Now, what do you? Thank you for the time this evening. Three thousand nine merger, and you just said I'm also a paper boy to president. I'm here in front of you tonight on behalf of the Royal Association, uh, consider our special use permanent at civilians who are just as high as one year. Uh, in the middle of our subvention. Our subject is permanent request tonight is to construct the twenty five twenty four open indoor trust civilian. I can spare the aesthetic for the division. Do our play area, uh, and keeping on the main base that means all the rest of the. Paul, we're prepared for early remarks and your packet passing instruction, uh, John.
Get an answer.
The foundation of the common area project.
And if approved.
Any questions? I have one, well, there's any of them. By our way, the trees were coming down, they were everything. That would have been a problem, the needle light, uh, had to report that. Finally, just to complete in the last month. Okay, so only I get in your packet from the back, you see a supplemental landscape drawing, and you guys doing a nice job. So the not as mature as the needle light tree that we were trying to. Yes. That makes more sense, yeah. For the rest of them? Looks pretty straightforward. Um, okay, you're available or not available. Uh, let's go through the use standard, I don't think. I was ever need to reach to each of them, I would like. Just look through them by number and then you get a. I went so. One, two, three, four, on the first page, that has said standards that. Questions? Next page is volume six. Situation. Fight, I am ready to do it, and they have a segue, and they have to follow that. Down here. All those standards are met, I don't need any additional infrastructure. But I'm hoping to deal with.
Won't cause any, um, erosion.
I'm very much proud of this. What ways no footprints? No utilities. Pay the streets are killed out of the. Right, but the fact that we're public use. Just a lot of co-education on my person. And then if. There'd be a lot of noise made, a lot of cars being then then hogged up the streets. All of these standards are methods now that they got creation that a lot of place to letters in support and especially important support from people directly across the street.
Yes, and just to mention that also under diet. Bringing, uh, under the great thing that they were, they're coming from my level as well as the comments from.
So that was a pretty quick review, staff has gone through the standards, has made the recommendation that all the standards are met. I don't hear any questions from the planning commission on that. My own personal comment is this looks like it would be a good thing. I have a friend whose daughter was married there and it was a good, good place to have that. And that's the kind of thing I would expect to happen. Ms. Joe, just a reminder, you need to have a public hearing on this. Thank you. Thank you, and you can remind me anytime, I've. I'm keeping plenty busy here, um, all right. So let's once again, um, do you like to make a motion to open a public hearing?
Sure.
Thank you. Pick, pick, um, all in favor say aye, aye. Opposed, none? Thank you, um, anybody here from the public to address this question? This is an opportunity to speak on this particular subject, if there is nobody, then I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Second, Mr. Lewis. All in favor, say aye, aye, opposed? All right, motion passes, public hearing is closed. We have reviewed standards, um. There were no public comments.
Make a motion to approve the request of a special use as a private park permitted in the R two Lake Shore Resident District.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, if not, call the question, all in favor say aye, aye, opposed? There you go, thank you. And I look forward to seeing it.
Yeah, let us know when you have a grand opening, she'll be there.
All right, next item on the agenda is the draft master plan. Master plans take a lot of meetings to get done. Yeah. So. Make a, yeah. Make a use them the most involved with this. So if you would. Comment.
Sure, uh, and the planning commission can decide how you'd like to reviews, you've had them in your packet, so there are some of these comments that I think you you probably want to talk about to discuss. Um, and some are, you know, typers, typos or minor, uh, minor comments. So, uh, the official master plan comment period ended on July eleventh. Uh, the public hearing, of course, is tonight, this is required by statute, so that's happening this evening. Um, they were all appropriately advertised, uh, we also sent out, um, notices, uh, to about two hundred and eighty-five people, uh, in, um, via email. People who have been participants at other stages in the process, uh, published it in a newsletter, um, as well as the required, um, newspaper publishing. Just got about sixteen emailed comments, uh, also got a comment from the city of Holland, but they had looked at it, didn't have anything in particular, but you know, kind of gave a thumbs up. And of course, the township board has also been reviewing this, uh, in some detail, they've looked at chapters one through four, and saw that a handful of comments there as well. That's my general overview, uh, let me know if you'd like to go through these individually, or if you'd like to hold a public hearing first, I know that there are some people who are here to speak to it. Um, maybe one other thing, um, there are, the Hani Khan worked with us on this, she did all of the graphic design, she wrote chapter five and was just kind of a general resource for. Um, this is how we do this well, she was a tremendous support, uh, one thing that she suggested was shifting the, um, township. Uh, the overall township mission vision statement to the very front of the plan, um, and so that's, uh, that's present, uh, in both versions in your packet. Uh, I, I think that it makes it clear and I think it it looks really nice, so, but that's, that's obviously your discretion, it's one of the decisions to make today.
Yes, second, any other questions? We've never talked about this before, so. All right, motion to open a public hearing. Second, second, Mr. Louise. All in favor, say aye, aye, opposed, all right, we have a public hearing open. If anybody is here to address this question of the master plan and, uh, changes to it, this is not. A final on the master plan, this is some edits and, uh. Eventually, the board of trustees will approve the master plan.
Yeah, so process wise, uh, any edits that you'd like to make, um, will give you tonight, I'll bring this back to you next month with edits made. Uh, and then after that, uh, if you're satisfied with that, then that will be an up or down for the planning commission to recommend to the township board, uh, and at that point, the township board would. Hopefully approve or disapprove of the plan, um, next month, of course, if there are still additional edits that you'd like to make, I think we still have about a month of play. In there before we hit kind of our deadline for when we needed to have this done.
Okay, thank you, anybody, um, here to address master plan?
Good evening, Brian Doyle from the Varnum Law Firm, here on behalf of Bowerman Blueberries, and I want to, uh, address a specific, uh. Part of the proposed draft and we submitted a letter, it's referenced in your materials, um, in July, on behalf of Bowerman, to formally request a revision. Uh, to a, to a, 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 a change in the draft that I think may be well intentioned to help blueberry farmers or to try to help blueberry farmers, but we think actually will, will do significant harm. And, and that in particular, uh, in the existing, uh, future land use map, um, Bowerman's property and, and, and many of its neighboring, uh. Farms are designated as rural estate residential, and this draft would call to change that to agricultural. And, you know, we're here to, again, request that it, it, at a minimum. Be retained as that rural estate residential, we actually think it'd be more appropriate to, to be changed to a, a, a low density residential. But at, at a minimum, we would object to the change to agricultural for a few reasons that I'll talk about, uh, very briefly. Um, I, I think as you all are aware, there was a meeting in the fall, um, thirty or so blueberry farmers, um, met with, with staff. Talked about, um. Their industry, their role in the township, of those thirty-one farmers, half said they did not anticipate still being in the blueberry farming business in five to ten years, which is, which is pretty remarkable, pretty substantial. Um, there was a lot of sentiment from those growers about, a, a lot of discussion about their plans to transition through to residential use, to sell to residential use. I know my client has relied on this existing land use, the rural estate residential is part of its long-term planning. So coming out of that meeting, there was overwhelming sentiment that, and, and you'll, I think you'll hear more about it tonight. That, that long-term blueberry farming in this township in particular is not a, a long-term sustainable business. And having the flexibility to transition or sell to residential is actually an important part of keeping these farms in business for as long as possible. Limiting, by way of example, uh, limiting the Bowerman property to just agricultural uses under the agricultural zoning classification, we think would take away two-thirds of that, of that property's value. Um, so, you know, with your constituents relying on this existing use as part of their long-term planning, we, we would say equity fairness, keep it at a minimum. Keep that, keep that existing use in place. Secondly, it's already a residential area, if you look at a map, you know, Bowerman in particular, they're surrounded on all sides by residential, and there's already friction, uh, with that. There's, there's noise, odor complaints, um, they are farming, they're an island, farming in a, in a, in a residential area. And so keeping it at the existing, um, rural, uh. Residential estate rural use is actually keeping it compatible with the surrounding uses, so you, you know, I, I would say respectfully, hearing your con, your constituents in this zoning district say. We want the ability to transition or sell, that's a, that's a part of our plan, it always has been. Actually tightening that use to make it more agricultural, I think is, is not listening to those constituents. And it's also going to create more conflict with, with all the surrounding residential. A third point I'll say is, is I wind down, I think, um. Going against. What the actual, what the farmers are saying, going against that and, and tightening the use, making it less flexible could have unintended consequences. Number one, it could accelerate. The, the, the transition of this use, if, you know, right now, farmers who are struggling to, to cut, to break even, they do see a light. They see hope in the future, they'll, they'll keep farming because, because, um, I'm sorry?
Oh, um. I was just a question of time.
Okay, I will, I'll wind up here quickly, I know it's been a long night, but right now, farmers do see, you know, we, we can continue to struggle through because we have the opportunity down the road to sell. If that opportunity goes away, it could, it could hasten the decline of farming, number two. Uh, with, with state citing for solar and wind, Bowerman gets mailers every week. Developers are very interested in, in utilizing their property and neighboring properties for, for utility scale, solar, uh, and wind utility. And, and I know that's not what this township wants, but it, it, it could force them into that, so we would say, um. At a minimum, keep it rural estate residential, we actually think low desert, low density residential is more compatible with all the uses that surround it, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Jeff Grunhoff, uh, from one five six zero zero Riley Street. So pertaining to the master plan, uh, we have a farm south of Riley Street and just west of Benjamin's Hope. We bought, we, uh. Uh, border the Bowermans. You know, Park Township seems to want to save the, the farmland, which is, uh, you know, nice, but you know. It's a little bit too late for that because we are surrounded by people, I mean, we have, we have, uh, Benjamin's Hope on one side, we have. Lots around the other side, uh, so that there's. When we, when we, when we're out there at night, we can hear the new football stadium, we can listen to that for the whole football game. Um, there's bands that play at, uh, Benjamin's Hope. Um, we're basically farming within a rural, uh, city, I mean, that's really what, what we're doing right now. And all, all these things just keep bringing traffic in, traffic, and, uh, you know, for blueberries, um. We have to either transition into newer varieties or, which is very expensive. And Park Township does not, uh. Real great for that because, you know, we have more traffic, we have higher taxes. And, uh, it's just not a, a great place to farm anymore. The other thing is, is that we don't have anybody to take over our farm, and wife and I, we're aging out of this farming thing, we're sixty-two. And, uh, so. We're going to have farms without farmers pretty quick. And so, you know, I think that what, what we would like to do is that you edit the, this plan and, uh, change. The, the farmland, uh, to like a R two or a low density housing. Not saying that we would quit farming right away, but it's just that option.
All right, thank you.
Joy Grunhoff, uh, fifteen six hundred Riley Street, and, yeah, we don't want to quit farming yet because we like it, but. Um, my husband asked me to put my two cents in, which is about all a farmer can afford. Anyway, last time I was here, I proclaimed the same concern that I still have, we are farming in a residential area. We have thirty acres of blueberries, expanding is not an option, on one side is land owned by an avid hunter that's being passed down to an avid grandson hunter. On the other side, we have a community looking to add a fun railroad, I don't know if you've ridden it yet. For the families to enjoy. Across the road, the blueberry farm has been for sale for a while, but it's priced out of profit, but profitability, blueberry farmers are not lining up for it. This part of Park Township is already tough to farm in with the schools, bike paths, communities, houses, and add to that the regulations and the global competition for blueberries. My dad and grandpa bought the farm that, the year I was born, we've had a great time raising our family on it. Our children have left the farm one by one to pursue what God's called each one of them to do. Now, our son, who's our farm manager, most essential person on the farm, he is enjoying his last year on the farm. And after the season, he plans to focus completely on his business, so what to do? I shouldn't be asking you, so no answers required, I'll just leave you with my concern is that we're farming in a residential area and it's not getting any easier.
Thank you.
Doug Wassink, one five three nine six Ransom Street. Also a blueberry farmer. Yeah, Park Township residents want to preserve ag and other green space, and there's a cost to that. And, uh, there's two ways that the township can go about it. Option one is helping the farmers and landowners be profitable by favorable rules. And purchase of development rights possibly. I applaud, I applaud the township's efforts along those lines, I think you sincerely want to help farmers that way. Option two. To, uh, preserve green space is, uh, simply removing, removing development rights by taking away the landowner's options. That lowers the value of the property. Examples of that are, uh, ten acre minimum lot size we have in the ag zone and also now it sounds like there's a. Uh, no sewer. No public sewer line being proposed in the master plan, um. These things are very popular because they're free to the public, why would the? Why would the public want to pay for a purchase of development rights if the rules prevent development already? I don't think the sewer limit rule is fair to farmers and landowners because it puts the cost of preserving green space on them rather than on the residents that want to preserve it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Andrew Van Till and I reside at two thousand two Tiffany Court, but I am here representing Bowerman's and I've been working at Bowerman's for the last fifteen years. Um, I want to be respectful of time, so I'm going to try to go as fast as I can through this because I know three minutes goes very quickly and there's a lot of things that I want to touch on. Um, first of all, this is not my first time in front of this committee, um, I have been here before asking for your guys' help in growing our farm, asking for your guys' help in surviving, um, these harsh conditions that, that we're trying to be in today. Um, it is true that many of the decisions that we've made over the last ten to twenty years have been based on your guys' master plan. We've looked at it, we've looked at what the intent for our property was, which was being designated as low density residential or, um, rural state residential, and that has made an impact on the decisions that we've made. Um, like you've heard other people talking about, um, replanting varieties, putting in new technologies, trying to be more efficient is something that every blueberry farmer out there is doing. Um, but we know that the future of blueberry farming is not here in Park Township, and so trying to dump more resources than we already have into trying to be viable is just not something that's, that's realistic for us. Um, my next point, blueberry farming is not viable in Park Township, I think you've heard that from other people and I think you've heard that during the meeting that we had, uh, with all the blueberry farmers, um, that came in here. And I, I can talk about that for thirty minutes, but the truth is, it's just not viable here in Park Township, um, is, I'd take that even farther to say Michigan, um, and it's starting to be not in the U.S. as well. Every opportunity that we have tried to diversify and grow, um, we've encountered some struggles, um, some of them being from this, this very building, some of them being, um, just from the, the area that we're in. Uh, but the truth is, and I want to back up what everybody said, that we are farming in a, in a residential community, we do not reside in a farming community. Um, we get complaints consistently about our cannons, we get complaints about the, the noise, the, the smell of our sprays. Um, I had somebody call last year and said, your noisy motors are keeping me up all night long, what is that motor running all night long? And I said, that's our cooler, keeping our fruit cold, we cannot do anything about that, we are trying our best here, because, as you all know, we want to be good neighbors, right? Um, I want to make the point that I get a couple of minutes here and I'm here representing a lot of people that are not speaking, if my mother and father-in-law were here today, um, they would use this opportunity to talk to you guys about all the green space, um, that they grew up looking at. Um, that's everybody's houses now, one hundred and fifty-second Riley, all the way to Quincy where all the schools are now, that all used to be blueberry farms, across the street from us where, um. Where Silver Ridge is and spot, and, uh, Stony Lake and all of that, that all used to be farmland, um, that we used to farm, used to be blueberries, used to be meadows, used to be, um, hayfields, you know, um, and of course. You know, we did our part in preserving our farmland and we've brought everybody else, um, into that, so. Uh, land in Park Township is in high demand, everybody knows that, if you guys go and look at Zillow or anywhere else, I mean, the truth is, is that the next generation that's not ready to take over our farm can't even find a place to live in Park Township. So it's not just about being able to do what we want with our land in the future, it's about the fact that there is no availability open right now. I'm going to speed through these last couple of things, um. We don't have a next generation to take over our farm as well, if they were here right now, they would spend the next three minutes telling you about the struggles that they've watched their parents go through, the struggles that they've watched us go through, and they say, we don't want to do that. As a matter of fact, tonight is the most time I've spent away from the farm that is not at my house, sleeping. I mean, that's, that's the honest truth, we are in the middle of blueberry season and we're taking time away to be here to talk to you guys tonight because it is that important to us. Other townships have had, uh, millages and things that they've done to try to preserve farmland, um, we feel that this may be, um, what's happening now where we're just getting a, uh, strike of a pen that says we're now going from this designation to this designation. Is, uh, is not the best way to approach farmland preservation for us. Um, once you step out of Park Township, land prices drop by, you know, a, a quarter of the price, like Joey said, we can't expand, there's no viable option for us to buy additional land. As a matter of fact, we bought ten acres right next to us ten years ago, and we did that to have a buffer because we knew that people were going to buy the properties next to that. And for the last ten years, we have looked at that property and we said, should we put blueberries there? And for the last ten years, we haven't been able to justify it, we just can't do it, even with property that we currently own. Not really. I knew the blueberry farmers from all the world ever to be here, and we just cannot compare. Here from other growers that can hear about how we're handling school, the truth of the matter is, we're competing with eleven dollars a day in Mexico. We're competing with a blue, who can put a blueberry plant in the ground and produce the fruit off of it, the same here, whereas it takes us five, six. We're just, we just can't compete this much. I want to make another quick point, and that is that, um. Again, I was, I'm representing a lot of people here, um, and I, one thing that I've showed a lot of people that has really, um, gotten under my skin a little bit is, it's just a. A, a header from media after here, uh, I believe it might advance the time, I'm not exactly sure, but I took the one minute video, and I told that video, this is how agricultural preservation. And it was, um. Sorry to say, you know, soon stepped up here and said, this is how agricultural preservation works, we've established a utility boundary that starts at one hundred and fifty-second and James Street, which happens to be the farm that our farm is on, and she said. How we preserve farmland. By creating a utility boundary that takes away our opportunities for the future, so in my opinion, that is not how we preserve agriculture. We've been preserving agriculture for the last seventy years and we'd like the opportunity to keep preserving our agriculture in the best way that we feel fit, so thank you for your time.
Good evening, my name is Tom Mark, and I live in the deep, I'm a beer strive, and the president of Bowerman Blueberries.
Our families. I have three children that are. I have given.
Fifty-one years old, and will have to be. Shoulder shot, my bottom off in barely moving is cancer. We had given, I've missed so many things by family, so many baseball games, I tried to coach my kid, I give everything I can, I get paid. Pennies on the dollar, the word isn't on.
I know that.
It's probably twenty. Are waiting to go somewhere to enjoy my grandkids' life. I live down home and we're maybe I can catch up with the kids and the things that I've missed that I laid out or something. This is not a job that's money due Friday. It is eighty, a hundred hours a week and now we got three times to build a mobile, hammer restaurant, hammer farm market, just for we can make a living. There is no future for the blueberries in farming. It's not possible. I would come up with a committee.
The nine of you live by Lake Michigan and we come up with preserve the lake and we say, you have to give me two thirds of your retirement, preserve it. And only the nine of you have to pay for it. That's not fair. Why do we have to pay, pay for the green space? Why do we have to pay for the beauty that people see? Why do we have to be the ones suffering, breaking our backs and not getting any money from it? Why is it our responsibility to feed the deer, to feed the animals? Why is it get smaller? We shoot. I sat here and listened to lady say she's concerned about guns and it sets her off. We have to shoot animals. We have deer up the butt because the farmland has been so small. They eat your crop. A deer will eat hundreds and hundreds of pounds a day. Not to mention the birds. We have to hunt. We have to shoot guns. We have to be loud. We have no choice. So I ask you, would that be fair if I said you need to do that and take two thirds of your retirement away? And now I just said your land, that your house that you may have owned for seventy years, which we've owned for seventy years, you kind of get one third of what the value is? Because you're just part of the twelve people in the bad zone. We expect this place to be a residential community. You've heard, I didn't have to say it. You've heard everyone testify on the gun rule here. There's no better statement than families are moving and houses are all around. A lot of noises are anxious. I didn't have to talk about it. They did it for me. Well, this is a residential community. And I want to talk about bottom of blueberry specifically. We are the second largest land owner in Park Township. You're not talking twenty acres of, of land. You're not gonna retire off of twenty acres. We have a hundred and thirty acres with the potential to potentially buy members to be a mother thirty, to make a decent, beautiful community. You're talking, let's give them a nut and boost of the thing, millions of dollars, generation, generational wealth that you could take away from moving my family and the future families. You're not talking a little bit, oh, I can get some spare money retired. You're talking millions and millions of dollars. I don't think any of you want to give up millions of dollars so people will stop by and look at your farm. It's beautiful. And we work hard to keep it beautiful. But it's not their job to tell me how to keep farm. You cannot preserve farmland without preserving the farmer. And I'm telling you, there is no farmer behind me. There's only houses. Most of you have a house built on woods and on farmland. We are directly across the street from all utilities, directly across the street. I look to my left houses, look to my north houses, our houses to the east, it's cornfield and uh, I think they're the largest owner. But we're, we're talking a beautiful neighborhood. Everyone is happy. Who are we preserving the farmland for? Not me. We've been preserving it for seventy years already. And what are you, the township is supposed to protect? This residents. What are you protecting them from by this blue homes? Smiling faces, children laughing, baseball being played in front of your swimming pools. The resource town community that you could potentially do, which all of you enjoy, your children, your family. Where are you protecting them from doing this? There's no protection. You're only protecting us. You're only taking away my retirement. I would love to be in Florida. I would love to enjoy those things, but if you do this, if it goes through, it's gonna drastically affect our future as that land was purchased with intent to eventually sell someday. So just remember that. I'm not saying we're out in the middle of the road and directly across and. Directly across the street. It's not a ten acre lot, it's not a twenty acre lot. It's a hundred and thirty acres, which make a beautiful, beautiful subdivision someday. Which is what is this town, this township needs. Not to mention the taxes that we'll bring in, the new schools you could build, the parks you could preserve. There's a lot of things you can do with that money with each individual home is sold more than what we're paying in taxes, which we pay a lot, but not as much as these houses bring in. So I'm asking you to think about that. Think about your family. Think if you'd want me to take millions from you. And see how that, how that plays out. When I'm not in the middle of Iowa, cornfield, I'm in the middle of Park Township, two miles from Lake Michigan, with vacationers and people running homes. So. Thank you. You're welcome. Anybody else? Nobody else to speak? Then uh, motion to close the public hearing? Second. And all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Alright, thank you. And thank you all for your comments. I appreciate you all coming down and I actually would like to spend more time, but. Let's talk around, and I'm sorry for phrasing it this way. I would like to tackle some easier subjects first and get those checked off and round back to this discussion. So. There were a few comments. If I may lead on page two of the table that Mika provided. The first big one is this exact one we were discussing. Um, at this page, top of page two, and then the second one labeled Flum. The mall, I think that's small parcel at the corner of one fifty second on Ottawa Beach Road. There's a little triangle there. I believe that's the one we're referring to, that it should perhaps be P instead of low density residential. I don't think that's a good place for residents, you know? Are you all familiar with what I'm talking about in the northwest corner of Ottawa Beach Road and one fifty second? Is that correct?
Yeah, it's right on the corner here. I apologize. I was gonna have a map for you and forgot to print that out. Um, so kind of where the, where the, right at the intersection, uh, where the township hall sits. I don't know which direction I'm pointing. Thank you. Kind of corner from the uh, gas station. Uh, there's a berm and kind of right around where that berm is, is a separate piece of land. It kind of veers off like this. It's sort of a triangle. It's owned by the Ottawa County Road Commission. Uh, my guess is that it may have been bought for a slip lane, you know, those right lane things that go really fast around the corner. Um, obviously not in use. There is some discussion at the board meeting about whether the township should look into acquiring that land. But at any rate, uh, everything around it, um, this parcel is zoned P, that's still zoned R three, which I think was originally the designation probably for this parcel. And so that's kind of a remnant that it was recommended may uh, be appropriate to change on the future land that we spent.
Any disagreement with that? I don't think anybody's gonna build a house there. Okay, so yes, please. I'm going to continue if anybody has another comment. Please speak up. There's a comment on side paths. Which basically said we want pocket parks widening. I like the idea of widening. That our standard should be a little wider. Mika, you and I have discussed that in the past. This is on page three, the large. But the warning signs, we're doing some of that. I don't know that we have to do anything with that. It's one that struck me. Page three, the large. One. We had then Mika's question and her review was, um, discussed, we need change to our goal statement or anywhere else. I don't think we do.
Yeah, you said comment has made the implementation file. I just asked.
Oh, we have a file. So uh, in the implementation chart within the plan, that's kind of a bare bones, you know, we want to say what we're looking at, but not get into the weeds too much. So I have a separate file that has a little bit more detail and that we'll continue to flesh out.
Yeah.
That's right.
Uh, Mika, you had said some accept edit and I think we all agree with those typos and some verpage and photos. Uh, the last one that I noted was that um, the thought to review annually, where, what, how much progress we've made on our master plan and our goals of the master plan. And I think that's a really good idea because I don't even think I've ever instituted that since I have been chair, although we were fairly busy there for a while with.
I, I would suggest we add the point to which we do that.
My suggestion would be, um, I think there are maybe two ways we could look at doing it. It would be an easy thing. It would be a, I don't know, a sensible thing to roll into the annual report. Um, that we do every June, you know, we'd look at kind of the bylaws and governance, what we've done over the past year. We could roll that in then too. Um, that does tend to be a pretty busy season around here, a lot of long days. Um, so another option would be to do it in a little bit slower season, kind of as a year end or year beginning thing.
What if we did it earlier in the year? That's our June meeting. What if we did it in um, April? Which would give a couple of months to.
Busy season starts in March.
You're no fun.
I know.
Well, that's a jabbing June. Sorry, in coordination with the board, it may make some sense to, to think about February because that's then also coming up to the board is, is considering budget. And if there's some budget needs that needs to a, address, to review and going forward. Uh, could coordinate well.
Is that typically the February meeting is budget?
Yes.
Okay.
It's usually, it's usually the February meeting in which it's reviewed and then we approve it a month or two later.
Okay.
Are you here in February or, or are you in somewhere else?
I'm normally uh, here early February. I'm usually about the twentieth is when we leave.
So you're just trying to get out of this.
Ah, you might say that.
No, I think February sounds like a good time to do it. We might be missing a couple of people who are south for the winter, but it's typically a slow time anyway.
So we would probably want to do that prior to the um, the board meets about two weeks after the planning commission. So their February meeting would actually be earlier in February than our February meeting is. Uh, so that would probably have us in January.
Seems reasonable. We can try it and if we don't like it, we'll change it.
Sounds good.
But I think an annual review is appropriate because otherwise master plans are made and they sit and five years later, somebody looks at them again.
Well, it, it allows us then to adjust them also to make notations to them so that it's a living document as opposed to done at one.
Yeah, there can be some process around that, but that would be the time to say, hey, this is something that we need to, to change.
And then the other one that you had brought up is the restructuring. The alternate structure to the master plan. Putting revision, mission and values early. I think, comments, thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think that's an excellent move.
Okay, good job. Yes. Any other before we get back around to uh, ag land?
Um, I wonder if we could just quick touch on, kind of go through and just quick touch on them so that I know, um.
Can I go through your list?
Well, I guess we don't necessarily need to go through each one. Um, but as far as some direction, um, there are a lot of requests here and so, um, if there, if, if you'd rather just look at it and say, hey, I think we should address this one, or I think we should address this one, um. I want to make sure that I have a to-do list. Walking away from this, it includes anything that you think is, is worth making any, any edits.
I, I'd suggest, Mr. Chairman, we just do that page by page. I mean, just page one, I, I'm fine. All the comments there that she's gonna do, ready to go.
Yeah, I wasn't able to get that back, so that would be for the next meeting. Okay.
This one is uh, we're taking care of maintaining their whole.
So what was your first choose was uh, for in the city of Holland, I think Judy Ministries is one of them. Uh, there are a couple others.
Their concern was. Falling apart. Um, so that would be something that
um, potentially be added to the Matisha plan. It's not so much a playing commission specific activity. That would be really um, unstable. Uh, may involve the board as well. And uh, I don't know how those funding programs work, so that's something that we would have to find out. We need a general ownership of that. So um, there is some investigation involved.
I agree. I think is that, is it the master plan, are you? But I don't know how other engineers people, it feels like this is a program that we set up because. But I'm sorry, catching the foot on the tongue. Yeah, I thought, I'm saying pitch, no, but I thought it could be expanded on four to five. Which is.
For a variety of attainable challenges.
Ownership and programs that provide homeowners assistance to maintain and take care of their homes. Which will be an expansion and that will be another vote under um, gold flag of objectives.
I don't know, the, the list of to-dos that we already have and while I certainly appreciate some behind wanting to add this as a goal, I still don't, don't see that plan necessarily to the master plan. I think it can definitely be of value to the community to explore, but I, I'm not certainly opposed to adding it, but I don't think we really want to.
I think that, honestly, I think the next uh, I said before was one of those. Let, let me interrupt this. I was thinking to go through this and I thought this would then, but that would quickly and I've been getting that, that longer stretch. And I, I think at this point, this feels like we're really not around and doing this issue. They go. This is a really difficult issue. That's, that's my. Inappropriate that everybody wanted to keep reading studies and everybody wanted to be in the area of total. Additionally, um.
Um, and I forget his name, the blueberry expert. Who, and we can ask questions, so. Who, as I understood him to say, said Michigan is the best state in the country for blueberries and Ottawa County. And the Park Township is the best township in Ottawa County, so this is the best place in Michigan to grow blueberries, ignoring the financial parts.
I understand, but my point, my point was that environmentally, this is an ideal place to grow blueberries.
Yeah, and honestly, if you're looking at quality, if you're looking at um, the taste of it, absolutely.
Hundred percent.
Thank you.
Uh, no, I mean, one of the things that we have in Park Township and specifically the microclimate that we have um, with Lake Mack and the, and Lake Michigan, um, is that first of all, we're, we're protected, right? We have a, a climate that. Um, is that first of all, we're we're protected, right? We have a a climate that allows us to. Have equalized temperatures that when we have the harsh, harsh colds of the winter in Lake Michigan protects us from that, you know, and that helps, um, helps us. To not have as much winter damage and same thing when we have the hot, hot temperatures, um, Lake Michigan tends to cool that. And you'll you'll see that even farms a couple of miles inland from us, um, are drastically different because of that microclimate. So there is something to be said about the land, the the acidic soil, um, sandy acidic soil that's here, that's. Perfect for growing blueberries, um, but there's just so many other factors that that factor into it that truly affect. Uh, like you said, the financial aspect of it.
Right, well, that, um, these are the different parts of the discussion.
Just wanted to say it's not a magic place for blueberries. It's it's a place where you can stick them in the ground and they'll grow without. Doing anything special to the ground, which is why it was, uh, developed so quickly out here. And that's great, and it is a good climate for blueberries, but the Pacific Northwest averages. Approximately twice the yields that we do. So it's it's not the best going place, if that's what you're asking.
Okay, thank you. The other side from the farmers is all the other people in the township who say, yeah, we love it. I I mentioned that if we. Previous, I don't know what you want to call them, administrations, birds, uh, planning commissions and looking at the. Um, future land use map seem to have clearly figured it's all going to be developed at some point. And that's why you look at it and what used to be egg land has been nibbled away at and. This would be another nibble and losing bowler mans would probably be like the final straw. And then you might as well give up because I don't know that anybody else is going to keep going. You guys have been doing a fabulous job. Yeah.
And another thing is that, you know, the guys that are going out. Because there's no good land use of it, they're just chucking it off for five, 10, 20 acres. They're not just rolling over all of the egg, like.
Yeah.
The the bad, the high prices are still there, so no one is saying.
Right, people can legally derive off 10 acre parcels in egg and they may well decide. I'm not gonna farm anymore. I can make some money selling 10 acre parcels for a pretty good price and call that good. Yeah. So. And one thing that's not, I mean, it's kind of on the topic and I'm just curious. It's not really this, but how can Peru raise a plant and get. Uh, who's produce in one year and it takes us four? What's the difference there?
It's all about like we, we have chill out, we have a winter, right? Um, and so. They have, they basically are putting their plants into dormancy, using chemicals, using trimming, using other, and their climate is. That which grows plants very, very quickly and then they just alter the plan to then produce fruit at certain times. So just like Mexico does has an amazing, you know, growth ability, they can grow a plant. So our problem here in Michigan, if we may get, we may get six or 12 inches of growth out of a plant in a year, then we have to go through a winter. And that winter will kill a little bit of that back, will lose some of that, and then it starts that growth a little bit. The next year we'll get another 12 or 18 inches of growth and. Ultimately, it takes five to seven years before we have a harvestable plant there where they're. Growing a plant that's five foot tall in less than a year and then they're putting that plant in dormancy and three months later they're getting fruit out of it. So not only are they producing plants faster and better than us, but we can't do the variety testing this required. They've been asking for us from Michigan to try new varieties that hold up better for the, for the quality for stores and they have better. Flavors and they have all different quali- qualities to them, but we can't even trial them because we put, we put something in the ground five years ago. And it kind of find out it doesn't grow, it doesn't grow good. Now you have to bring it out. Now we got to bring it out, it was five years of from ever getting a crop onto that from anyone whatsoever. And if you're, I mean, when you talk about the cost input per acre for blueberries, this is not corn. This is not something that anybody can just throw in the ground. I mean, it's a very specialized property. It's very expensive. There's a reason why that 10 acres that we bought hasn't been planted.
Yeah, I know that was.
Most of the production area is now really getting rolled into soil. Uh, like through most of their stuff is grown in a bag, they throw it in a bag and throw. There's the right, uh, P M O S in there and a lot of the local fiber from India. And they throw some sulfur, the, make it sour and they they grow it in a bag and move it around wherever they want.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Now, this is all good information. None of us are farmers.
New Jersey and Mexico, so that the glove of food right now, they're in Harvard only times. The only time we ever made money, they gave us four of those, it was the second half of the season, we were told, when they weren't in push from them. The mission was at one point evil place that had blueberries. That's how my dad made it. We aren't able to price, we're basically really competitive, so we did go and prove the national proof for the Congress. And they said, oh, they're important, we showed them all the data, we showed them they're not paying any money. We showed them they have to be terrified, maybe fair, and they said, no, it doesn't urgent. Uh, we we did try it all along, and we did try it, and you know, if we all made money, we couldn't be sitting here.
Right. So I wanted to get back to this. I wanted to get some more information. I want to be polite here, um. This discussion goes against everything in on this part that. We've been pushing for. Do we want to? We do, so I would like comments from everybody on this. But anybody like to lead with comments? I would like to hear from everybody some response.
I'll jump in. We're hearing from the state, the county and from Park Township that we need more housing. And this is, uh, when we started to work on the master plan and we were working on these two main priorities. That have been, and again, I think you, everybody understands, we took a lot of feedback. We got a lot of input from the township. Uh, from residents and these were. Both really important and clearly diametrically opposed. So I think we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to make some decisions in terms of. I I neither, both are very important, um, but we know housing is a problem, I think. I'll speak for myself. We have a, uh, I have a son and a granddaughter living with us. Um, he's got a good job. He's been trying to buy a home in Park Township. He's been outbid, he's actually over, uh, made offers for the last three or four years. Over asking at a number of homes and not surprising to any of you, uh, was outbid by a cash offer. In a lot of cases by investors. So I'm, I'm very sensitive to this and I understand. The the challenges you have both from the business and also from profitability, also from the succession planning. And I think that's. In many cases, a bigger issue, um, for a lot of individual businesses, so I'm. Is we have both of these priorities that are really important. I'm gonna come down on the opportunity to be able to. Provide up, uh, land that can be developed for for housing, particularly in areas that are already infilled. I mean, you, you're surrounded. I don't live that far from where you are, so I. Yeah. I understand. Anybody else ready? Got it? I ripped the bandage off, guys.
Okay, Dave.
So I I grew up in Park Township. I actually grew up in Holland Township, but I spent most of my time in Park Township, except for. And, uh, I think I was about nine years old when I started picking blueberries in summer. That's that, that's, that's what we did, you know, and it was a different part of my life, you know? And just living in this area of blueberries, it's, we love it. And I think a lot of the residents in the surveys, it was an auto, so yeah, we really liked it. Well, you guys liked it for a while and then you didn't, so I I understand that and I I don't know, the the main question is. You want to have the, your property future planning or something other than that and. I I guess I'm not totally opposed to that because, you know, as much as we resist, uh, development, it's still gonna happen. You know, maybe we can just control the rate or something like that, but, um. My thought is, you know, especially for a a big plot of land like you guys have, um, I I would. I would not want to jump right into putting it in the, in the, in the master plan as a difference only because. Everybody learned not too long ago that once it's natural planned for that, you kind of lose a lot of control. We had a development on the south side where it was master planned for a certain. Zoning and they came in and resolved it and they totally against it, they helped, they did their, um. The 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 presidential rural states is obviously different. And that would probably be the best use of that land outside of growing blueberries. So, um, so I. I, I thought I could talk, I'm not sure I'm saying anything concrete, but, um, I could, I could, I could go either way, I guess, you know, it's. We can do it now or we can do it later, and I think it's probably gonna happen. But I would like to see probably, well, and of course, even though it's not master planned, you guys can still come and and request a zoning variance. Or it's only changed, you know, and I think to do that, a good solid site plan and for development. We probably believe you probably could do it.
I'm kind of taken back by the universal philosophy of, you know, having more with the public. And developing and the values. So I'd love to hear tonight. Talk, but I do think I'm gonna do a little more research. Um, and, uh, talk to some people and give me some insights into the value of that land. In terms of what's best for the future, so I will do that.
Right, I I will agree, this would be a huge change to what we've been. Thinking for the master plan, so Stephanie.
Thinking about how how to appropriately articulate. Um, I certainly appreciate the feedback, absolutely. I do agree that it is pretty late in the process. I also don't love rural estate residential, while aesthetically it's there. When we talk about a variety of housing options, it's not there for me. It's, you're, you're already doing larger parcels, we've talked about that, you're not pricing it to a point where people are still actively come to our township. So I don't think that's the right answer either. I think. If there was a well thought out site plan and they were asked for rezoning. Right, like, it absolutely could still make sense. But on the other hand, I wouldn't be prepared at this point to leave it as rural estate residential. Because I don't believe that when we're thinking about the future development. And finding affordable options for people to come here, that that's the most affordable option. We have a lot of rural estate properties. There's a lot of people my age and younger who will likely never be able to afford them and to be perfectly honest. Working in the corporate world, we have a lot of problems in this country. It's hard to make ends meet, even with a good job. Regardless of what you're doing, honestly, I mean, that's the reality for a lot of us, people my age and younger. Looking at other policies way larger than all of us that may have an impact on my ability to retire before I'm seventy, seventy-five. Who knows? So it's, um, it's not easy. But I wouldn't be prepared to amend what we have in the master plan.
You would not. We'll call on you.
Uh, Stephanie, you, your last statement, could you repeat that? I'm not sure I heard it exactly, just curious. You said you would not be.
I wouldn't be in favor of amending.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure. I I support both what David and and Stephanie have said, uh, I believe that. Putting in, uh, leaving in it as a land use, future land use that agricultural. Gives us the control that we're looking for. And it is in fact, uh, could be looked at as infill. Because of everything that does surround it. I think Stephanie's thoughts about, uh, the idea of being in, uh, rural estates, being affordable. Yeah, five years ago when I bought my house, it was affordable. Did I have that kind of, uh, estate today? It's twice that at plus. So. I think we can keep our control with agricultural if. If a developer comes in with massive site plan that we know the types that we're looking for in terms of housing development. We'll be able to control that and and expand and I, and I don't disagree at all that. Housing is is a, is a dire need throughout Ottawa County and and central west Michigan. So I I understand that, uh, but I really don't want to. I think. As we went through the process of looking at the future land use that some, uh. Part of that was the fact of we would have control, that we're controlling it by in development. Uh, and the fact of the future. We have control of where it's gonna occur and what's gonna occur. And and I still think that is a primary goal that we're trying to accomplish. Uh, with this board or with this commission as as well as the board. So I would support and and say the same thing. At at this point, I'm not, uh, in favor of changing. Our current master plan as as currently designed.
Okay, thank you. And now it's my turn. I I have a little change in what I'm thinking, so it's. I feel differently tonight than I have previously. Some things. When somebody commented, homes are the last crop you'll ever grow on a piece of land. Um, still sticks with me. Once it's built up, it's not gonna go back to farmland. And it is a domino effect. We have dwindling farmland. It's being encroached all over the place. Previous administrations have. Encouraged that and assumed that's what was going to happen, which makes it more difficult now. I don't like making, and I don't know what, and I will, we will ask what the effect, if we were to recommend a change. To the master plan, that would be this kind of change. Well, perhaps with just for these few parcels that were down along James Street, it might not be as big a change, but. A fair amount of the master plan might have to be rewritten. Or would it just be the future land use map?
Well, it'd definitely be the future land use map. Uh, you'd want to look at the utility boundary as well, most of that area because the water table is so high, it's not suitable for septic. You have to have attachment to the. Beyond that, I would have to look at it a little bit more deeply. Um, one thing I would say is that as we're, been going through the master plan process. Uh, there was a development that popped up, as you will all remember, uh, on the north side of James. It kind of took everyone by surprise. Uh, I think the thing to be careful of is jumping quickly, um, and. Would encourage being thoughtful about what the best use of this land would be. Uh, I think there are some really fair questions being asked as far as is rural estates residential really what's most appropriate if we need more housing? If that's, uh, it, but again, that's not a small question, that's a big question. And so as it was, um. Originally written in the master plan, it talked about this is, this is a really big issue and you're hearing it yourselves tonight, this. There should be no downplaying about agriculture and literally in particular in Park Township is very difficult right now, um. What the, what the most appropriate land use is though, I think is a question. What the what the most appropriate land use is though, I think is a question and we tend to reflexively go towards. You know, this should be residential, this should be this type of residential or it should be that type of residential. When we're looking at land use planning, we wanna think through what the ramifications of those are, ramifications for uh traffic, for utilities. Um and residential really doesn't pay for itself and that the larger scale residential in particular. Doesn't bring in enough tax revenue to cover the services that it requires, so I think there are a lot of bigger questions that go along that too, um. Now, how that affects the way that you approach that, approach this, um. It, one of the other things that mentioned in the master plan is that. We're looking at, okay, so in the next three to five years, doing a deeper dive at the saying, what is viable here? What are the challenges to understand that a little bit more deeply, a little bit more thoroughly. Uh and then if you come to a point, you're saying, no, this isn't viable, I wanna see something different to do some scenario planning to look at. You know, what are some of the different alternatives that are out there, so um I guess those are my thoughts from. As far as the master planning perspective, whatever direction you decide to go, obviously, um we'll move that way. Some things will be a little bit tougher to implement in our timeframe than others.
Thank you, um one other question though, say. The state having this current future land use map, and then somebody came in and. Bowermans or whoever and said, we wanna put in this nice subdivision and we want it to be low density, not low density, yeah, low density R three. Um and they come to us with a proposal, we can. Jump past the master, you know, we don't have to go step by step, we can do a direct. Change, we could go to even high density residential. Or would there be a problem legally? Your zoning is supposed to be based upon your master plan. So if you've got something that is master planned for ag and you're pushing the zoning in front of that. Uh surrounding neighbors could potentially challenge that. And basically the zoning ordinance as a whole indicating that it's not really based upon your plan, okay?
And and to just elaborate on that, you've noticed that how in township, every few months you'll see something in your packet, it's the intent to plan. Uh that tends to be what they're doing, is they're looking at a parcel and they're saying, actually, we we wanna shift. From what we have in our master plan and they're kind of doing that in some places on a parcel by parcel basis.
Yeah, yeah, we see stuff come in, it was ag, it's now apart from buildings, so that's a pretty big jump. But they do that ahead to change their plan in order to allow the development. One of the comments that was made was that. Allman's is close to Silver Ridge and other developments, so that if we were going to do development, it makes sense to be adjacent to James. Rather than further north. So that makes sense to me, um. Your comment on giving us control. Is also good. Um and I think yours on on being not quite ready is appropriate and maybe it was a middle ground. Of leaving it as we have it in the future land use map, but making it a high priority in our goals and so on to reanalyze and inside of five years be revisiting. The subject, I would like it to be inside of that, actually. Because then we end up with a control, but we're also saying we need to make a decision, these people need to make decisions. Dan, you look like you're thinking something.
That's just my resting face.
That's. Kind of my approach, I would recommend that you. What we're talking about here is having to be brought back to us. At the next meeting, correct? And I would like you to really bring that up with the board at their next meeting. What you're thinking about.
I can do that.
And prepare them and get their comments.
We've been, we've been going through the master plan.
Yeah, because this is from all the things we've done, from all the public input, from the meetings we've had, from the emails we've had. Uh from the reviews we've had. Everybody except the people who are directly involved, um so let's keep ag and I would love to keep ag and I. I would assume you guys would love to keep ag, except you don't think you can.
Well, that's a legitimate question because the economy's a scale, one of your issues.
Oh, hundred percent, and I'm glad you brought that up, actually, because that's one of the points that I did get to mention. All around us, all that you see, the blueberry industry's consolidation, as a matter of fact, um. Dave Rinder's who owns Procter Blueberries outside of Park Township, just purchased uh Perfect, it was the largest blueberry farm in. In Michigan, so he is now the largest blueberry grower in the whole of Michigan. And the fact of the matter is, the quintessential family farm that is us, we are one of the new ones left that grow, pack and ship all of our own blueberries. Which means that not only do we grow the blueberries on site, and we have a packing operation, we put them in a box, which means we take trucks and we ship them all over the country. The fact of the matter is, I can't afford to pay for the equipment that's in that farm. Because I only run it a couple hours a day, I'm only running mine through, I don't pay, I don't hire anybody else that I I farm anybody else's. So the fact of the matter is, if we, like, we're gonna get gobbled up by somebody, somebody else who wants our acreage or wants our land. But even then, it's not, it's not viable for them, like, they're not gonna come in and buy our blueberries in Park Township because it's not worth farming into them. But the truth of the matter is, everything that heads that could be bought up is being bought up because of the economies of scale. Because somebody else like in having a massive facility and runs by production, they just do it so much more efficiently than than we can.
Yep, got it.
If I could, if I could add one more thing, that is just that, I don't I don't think that we're necessarily here asking you to change your current master plan. We're asking you to kind of retain the master plan that has been there for a long, long time and not. Take away our ability in the future, but I agree, we can come here with a site and come here and say, this is what we're thinking, right? But then, I mean, for the last twenty years, we've been kind of drafting, we've been kind of thinking, like, this is, this was our plan and now. You know, it would make it a lot more difficult for us if you change our specific in the master plan to.
Yeah, you make the point, it it will be harder, but the process is available to you. And I wanna make, it doesn't shut you down completely to to develop, but it will require. Additional process, so to speak.
Just to note that there there is consolidation, that's something that I've heard as well from other growers, there's a lot of consolidation that is happening and. Um just you used to be able to just grow the berries and you can't just do that anymore, you have to be doing more of a vertically integrated operation. Um, you know, you can't buy a five thousand dollar tractor, your tractors, I don't know how much your tractor, a hundred dollars or something. We we do see operations like that um happening, there's there's facilities being expanded and built also in Park Township and so.
In the agricultural business, no, no matter what the crop is, corn, soybeans, you name it, wheat. It's it's a huge operation, I mean.
And in any of this.
A hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a combine. And you think your Mercedes that cost a hundred and twenty thousand bucks and you use a combine for two weeks for a hundred and fifty thousand bucks, you know, so.
No.
Well, I I'm sorry, I've been out of the business for ten years.
Specifically Blueberry Farm, because what you're gonna see is, there is, most of them are for sale, most of them are not being taken care of anymore. Well, it may look like a blueberry farm, it's a twenty foot tree that, that, you know, they may be harvesting it once a year. And but they've given up on putting any money into it, you know, the every farm around us that we see that hasn't been well enough by somebody else. Is getting deprecated, it's just, it's just going back to the land, it's getting paid homecoming.
They're they're not sprayed and we're getting.
Hmm, okay, good. Yep, got it. I would like to propose that. We don't change our plan here tonight. That you go back and review and come back with specifics of how much of a change it is. That we also get the board's feedback. On that, and Mika, if you can get to the board, I know it's coming up. But as far as rezoning, specifically how much we have recommended rezoning to ag. In other words, there was the rural estates along James Street that we changed to ag. And I don't remember how much else we did.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if if not rezoning, yeah, I would call it rezoning, but I would designate.
Right, because. How much we redesignated.
Yes.
To get the specifics on that, I don't have a here.
So, okay, so you're asking me to look at the past future land use map and the proposed future land use map and say, how many parcels, how many acres, how much area?
And and I guess part of that would be, if, do we adjust any of that?
Right, that's the decision we're looking at, and I'm leaning differently than I did in the past. More information, more input, so that's my recommendation, I don't, there's no vote here, I think. This is just recommendations for edits.
Other specifics that you're looking for.
Well, we still have to finish going through your list.
Right, not not. This particular item, yeah.
Anybody, other specifics we we should be asking for on this particular item? And some feel for how much of the rest of the master plan goes. I know, it's huge.
Yeah, well, that was, I mean, that is, I think that is kind of a trick and, you know, I, as I presented to you in the past, I think this is the biggest question facing Park Township in the next ten years. Because you've got what? The the vast weight of public comment was, and then you have um. The the growers who are actually doing the work um on the land and so, um. Yes, that would be a pretty, that could be. Depending on how far you go, that could be pretty significant, a pretty significant shift.
But I don't, it's not something we wanna get wrong.
No, it's not, um I would say too, though, that one of the things that um you would wanna be considering then is, so, um. The fear of Park Township. Right, the character of Park Township, what is that, that 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 thing that people come here? This is something to ponder over the next, you know, until the next meeting, what is, what is that, what does that look like, what does that mean? How much of it is agriculture, how much of it is parks, how much of it is trees, how much of it is housing? What is that, what what are some of the, thinking a little bit more deeply, and what are the components that make that character up?
Right, and even if we wanted to go even further, if we made. This into low density res- um residential, we had moved the. Smaller lot section of the two high densities, the lower one, we moved into the LDR section so that it could conceivably be. Seventy-five hundred, was that the number, eight thousand square?
Eighty-five hundred. Single family, yes.
If they had, if they had utilities, which are in the streets. So if we really wanted housing. That kind of thing is available. So. That, you guys. I think that's where we're going for now, decision is not cast in stone at this point. I thank you very much for your input, I find it extremely valuable. Yep, that would certainly be, if we were to. Make this residential, we probably would change that. I don't know why we wouldn't. Yeah. Yeah, that's all. There are a bunch of things that all fit into the, we want to preserve ag. And that if we don't do these things, then if it goes to court, the um judge may well side with the, you didn't really mean it. So that's why all of that was built up.
Well, thank you guys very much for hearing us with an open mind, you know, it's really hard to know what we're gonna walk into, you know, but this is, this is our life. Like, you can tell we're very passionate about this, it's what we live and breathe every single day. Uh so thank you for hearing us out, thank you for being able to listen and and deal with it, potentially changing uh what you've heard from other people, getting a different perspective on it. Because uh truly, I think hearing this perspective from people who are farming and taking care of it, it is really important. You know, I I wanted to just question one other thing, you know, that you said about bringing people into Park Township and I think, you know, our, again, the state parks, uh Ottawa Beach, that kind of stuff. It brings a lot of people in, but so do we, we bring a lot of people in to Park Township, to our, to our place, we've been raised steward of the land for the last seventy years. We're really just asking you guys to allow us to continue to be steward of the land we afford, you know.
Okay. You know, when you, when you repay, you get on the planning commission, it's fun. All right, thank you all. All right, now back to my previous plan. Which wasn't a very good one.
Uh page two, number three.
Page two, number three. That was the triangle on the corner.
Nope, that was the maintenance of homes. You're eighty percent there.
Yes. Disagree, I'm gonna say what I think the temperature of this, of the planning commission is, which is that. We're not sure it belongs in the master plan, it's a good idea.
That's like the repair, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think Terry's, but.
Yeah, I can go either way.
So.
I think I think if we figure out a way not to leave it. That is there, and that's what I'm not going through.
I think we should have a tree use committee that helps plant trees all over the township, but. They're not gonna do the master plan.
We have to prepare our residents in terms of nicer.
On an egg?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep, I think you're. That may be the biggest issue in this whole issue.
It seems to be.
Perception.
It seems to be growing.
Yeah.
It's the numbers that the big reports.
Which numbers, the ones with the dollars thing in front of them or the numbers with the? Yeah. But then, and I don't wanna get going on this long discussion, but then if they wanna preserve it and the farmers can't make it, then they better pitch in.
Yeah.
How bad do you want it? Yeah. So.
Next topic.
Yeah, I do. Um housing supplies. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we all agree with that, and I think it's in there, but how we do it is a question. Right, that's, you know. Yeah.
It's it's a real bad.
It is.
There's no easy solution.
I, yeah.
Terry, did you have? Based by age, did you have any specific thoughts? I know the board was talking about housing and what it more around the interpretation.
Well, I agree. I think it's in our plan. It's right in my opinion, it's, you know, may wish to review the goal and position to to make sure it's there. I don't know, I think it's there, I think we've all discussed that. It's the house.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Yes.
So. The house, hey. Feel it's that. Not part of. Fascinating. The patient. You believe in the house.
Mm-hmm.
But it is detailed, we're not just go. We're not gonna save it for all the, you know, Michigan, Michigan. And and. Create a contract with them, there's an increase of supply, even though Governor Ripley, Whitmer, yeah, Whitmer just. Uh gave fifty billion dollars or whatever it is to 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 increase supply in Michigan. Uh unfortunately. Ninety percent of that's gonna go to the east side of the state.
Mm-hmm. Well, we do have. Promote infill and redevelopment where infrastructure already exists and we have some steps in there. We have promote a variety of attainable.
What attainable?
That's, that's, that's a really exciting path.
Right, we we struck out affordable to put attainable with.
So attainable, affordable is.
Have money to obtain it.
You do, but you have to have, uh what, less money, more money? Affordable is typically defined as what? I think less than. Fifty percent AMI area median income or maybe eighty percent? I don't remember where the cutoff is. And then attainable is is one level up from there, so it's something like eighty to a hundred percent of the area median income, so you'd be looking to. Kind of hit that sweet spot. Affordable housing um typically can't be built without subsidy. Uh you you just can't build it without subsidy.
So these are officially defined words.
Tell me, tell me what attainable is again?
I think it's eighty to a hundred and twenty percent of area median income.
So what's the area median income?
I'd have to look it up, I don't know. Uh well, I mean, so then are we talking about Park Township or are we talking about Ottawa County? Because it's very.
Just say it there. So it's that use.
Let me ask Google.
Because that's easier for percentage.
Oh, yeah, we can do that. So. What is equal to that? The cost of a house?
No, it's affordable for somebody who is in that income range, and I think that.
Right, for that that house.
Right, so meaning, you know, I don't know if it's a thirty year mortgage with a payment that's less than, what do they say now? Seventy-five percent of your income? It used to be twenty, one seventy-five, whatever you say, say now.
But I I mean, I know, like, like, they were wired of that, that Timberline North, where they slashed the sand dunes and all that kind of stuff. They're building small homes for four hundred and fifty, four hundred and eighty, five hundred thousand dollars. Who's that paid up there? I mean, you would say by by the size and stuff, that that's a starter home. You know, we used to call it a starter home, so.
I mean, that's, that's, no, but that's exactly where I've been going earlier when I said that there are, there are bigger issues that at a township level we can't. Like as, as a state, as a country, there are other.
Income equality, inequality.
Other things, but. You know, focusing on what we are doing, we're making decisions that are. If if we were to know that's pricing. Many local residents out of the market, why would we also then have a plan to do larger, grander? Development, right? Like, it it doesn't make sense from my perspective, so we're both saying attainable. Attainable is. Considering all of these elements, when they're bringing forth these development plans and making sure that it's in line with our goals.
So what I'm trying to be dumping for this is attainable housing, not a house. Kind of apartment or.
It could be.
These things that Bostres is building over on the south side, don't you know?
Yeah, I think that that probably would qualify as attainable.
Say it's still there one day. But I mean, attainable, like, it's not.
I mean, on the other side of it. Who knows what's going to happen, right? Like, hopefully there's not another review of two thousand eight, but like, if things happen, the definition over time of attainable is also going.
Right.
To change. It's it's not ever going to be a specific static goal. But it's looking at it where we are, kind of with the information at hand of where we think it's going to go, by the.
I think when we talked about attainable, we were also thinking about. First time buyers and what they felt was appropriate for them or what they could purchase, what they could live in. As opposed to. The dollar amount of it, right? It could have been, as an example, smaller homes. We talked about different structures. Um multi, you know, multi-use areas, things like that. So I think it has as much to do with. The desire of the buyer and what they can. What they would be comfortable living in is it is with the pro- that cost of the house.
And and I think, you know, certainly thinking about first time buyers is important, but also we're thinking about. You know, right now, there's not a lot of movement then from first time buyers to that.
Second time buyers.
Incent starter home, so.
Right.
What what does it look like again to have that variety so that there is an opportunity? For someone who's local, perhaps in one of those starter homes, to be able to go to something.
Right.
A little bit bigger.
Yeah.
And and again, then you're creating opportunities for someone else, obviously. Uh, you know, so it's not like all of the development has to be starter homes by any means, because we still want to have that variety, but. I can allow you still what is current by definition of attainable to be closer to our goal. We're, we're giving more opportunities for those homes so that that movement. Maybe.
And attainable, attainable can change. I know. People are talking about building homes of a thousand square feet. Which should be more attainable. Than two thousand or twenty-five or whatever, so.
And there are tools and strategies that you can use to help with that. Ottawa County is working on something. Dave and I met with um somebody from the county, I don't know, a month or so ago. They're talking about programs that they're putting together to help. Make. Help increase the supply of some of those more attainable homes, so um there's some grant funding available as well for things like zoning rewrites and different things like that, so there were, there are a number of things on the list. See what we can do to move forward and walk towards some of those options.
Yeah, back post-war, thousand square foot bungalows were, they're all over the place.
Oh, yeah.
Eight thousand dollars.
Hmm?
Eight thousand dollars? Definitely not.
Yeah. Okay.
Could be that, let's get to the series of my.
Mm-hmm. What's a catalog? I remember, I remember Montgomery Lord's catalog, too, yeah. Make that, on the next one. Comment or notes, it should be rezoned to a lot of lots of two to four acres. Which would be. Egg, let's see, no, rural estates is two acres.
I'd suggest that we, if you have any comments on that, I'd hear them, uh roll that into any of the egg conversation that we have.
Yeah.
At the next meeting.
Yep. Boulevard. Okay.
That was a cool idea.
I'm gonna, some of these, I'm gonna just go through them, speak up. Where short-term rentals will be allowed, noted with appreciation, especially from Dan.
Yeah, sure, let me kind, I mean, all of this is related, the the affordable housing and the amount of things that are taken away from the market because of rentals.
Yep.
It's all related, sure is.
Oh, absolutely. My neighborhood's a perfect example of that.
Yeah.
But quick, I don't think this belongs in the master plan.
No.
It's part of something.
Right.
So.
Quick question, Dan, is there, I hope it's quick. Is there any movement legally on ways to prevent corporations from buying up neighborhoods? No. Thank you. You know, I would like there to be, but. All right, well, I'm on page three. Uh label lake access with small signs or symbols. I think they want, I don't know which. Like James Street access, Riley Quincy, they want signs there saying this is a beach access?
Yeah, maybe, maybe they were talking about in real life as opposed to in the plan.
Yeah. I think it doesn't belong in the plan. Um. By digital Commonwealth. They don't know.
Think everything is okay, except that last comment. Honey, we're focused through the end. At at four ten, I'm starting to get that way.
Me too, bud.
And I'm fairly certain they would suggest it, it may be a motion. That we finish up the master plan and we read for beam. Three weeks from now, to finish up the next two items on the agenda plus.
Well, I, I understand. I did, I do want to deal with hysteria. Um, we're kind of abusing, abusing the developer.
Yeah.
A- and the food trucks ordinance, there is some desire to have that finished so that there can be food trucks at a pickleball event.
So I think we've done a very thorough job on the master plan and staff has some direction. And um. Mika, I think you have enough direction to. Play with that.
Yep.
All right. Onto eight, food trucks ordinance. We've seen this more than once.
I guess I didn't do a second. It's right.
Where is my food trucks ordinance? I'm trying to find my food trucks ordinance. There it is. Got it. Um.
Yes, I believe I did notice this for public hearing, it is on the agenda.
Okay. Then.
There's no public.
I would, I would, we're in public here. I would like a motion to open the public hearing on food trucks.
Motion to open the. Reports.
Any public will wish to speak? Thank you. Oh, we didn't vote. Let's vote on the first motion. Okay, all right. Now we're voting on the second motion. All right, all right, public hearing is closed, sorry for that. Yep, and we all voted yes. Okay. Food trucks, we've seen this multiple times, Mika, um.
And maybe the edits you requested.
Yep. It looks good to me.
Yeah.
The only, I had a couple of typo places. So I had one on page two. On D, at the top, D. And then either should be taken out. Yeah. Or thirty minutes after sunset. Right, either is stricken, page three. Under five, it's about a quarter of the way down, under five, where it turns. Red, the township manager, so confirm that the pros, proposed event will not be disruptive. Just add a B in there.
Yep.
I got another.
Okay.
Item three. B. Uh they may not be located within the right of way without prior written permission, have been secured.
Yes, having been.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Other than that, it looks good. I'm happy with it.
I think it achieves what we wanted.
I think it's maybe not.
Yes.
Fairmore. Um. But if you've been to the fair, you know, there's probably. Fifty.
Lot of food trucks.
Food truck, food truck there. Um. I think we need to figure out a way in which we can exempt. Major events that take transpire on the. Fairground property as well as maybe on the. Potentially commu- uh community park. Um. From the standpoint of the fairgrounds. Uh it can be handled by the lease. They exempt them from what? It's going through all the requirements to be. So to be licensed. They are. But they'll have to come in and get a permit every time they have a fair, we have twenty, we have fifty fairground. Truck, food trucks coming in here.
Fairgrounds a year, it's a big deal.
It's a big deal. Then why not let the fair board handle it? The same thing with the Celtic. Event that just took place, the Celtic Festival, had all those food trucks there. It it's all done on the fairgrounds, it's all under the control of the fair board.
So the, the food, um, I think. Just the fair board would have to come in and get. A license. I don't think each individual food truck would.
My assumption in writing it was that the fairgrounds, their lease, their original site plan from. Nineteen fifty-two or whatever it was, uh was kind of a, what happens at the fairgrounds, happens at the fairgrounds. Um they're permitted to do all sorts of things. If Mr. Martin wants to weigh in on that, um. Might be welcome.
It would be more of a non-conforming status that they said that the Ottawa County Fair has had those types of uses there in the past before you would have adopted this ordinance. Regulating, restricting it.
So you're saying legal non-conforming?
Correct.
Mm-hmm. And I wonder, in in two areas, says hosting for more than three but not more than fourteen will require a permit from the zoning. Administrator. Need a site plan where the bathrooms are, dates, and that's hosting food trucks, not being a food truck.
Correct.
Right.
And that's on non-commercial properties such as schools, parks, so I would think that the Ottawa County Fair would just have to come to you and say, we're gonna running the Ottawa County Fair, and you go, okay. That's how I read that.
Right, but again, they're the, if they're in existing non-conforming use, then it's not something that they would need to do.
Right, but even, even if they did, it could be handled.
Right.
That's.
And that's what, and that's what would happen for this property, as an example, that would just be a um. Pretty informal, here's where the trucks are gonna be, and you already know where the bathrooms are, and here's your trash can. Be that sort of thing.
So I don't think it's a, Terry, I don't think it's a problem.
I I'm not sure I'm following how, how this operates. Help me out.
Um.
Lauren.
As far as. As far as which.
Let's start back with Dan. Dan, you you stated.
What I said was, what you're doing here in this is creating a specific provision of this food trucks. So the Ottawa County Fairgrounds has been operating, the Ottawa County Fair. Probably from before I was born. Definitely before you would be adopting this, so the Ottawa County Fair can continue to operate the way it has been as a lawful non-conforming use. And it's not going to be subject to this requirement that you're putting in here now. Because it was legal pre-existing this, because of the way the township has handled it with the Ottawa County Fair through the lease. Year after year after year after year permitting food trucks. Carnival vendors to be on the property. I think Mika is talking about this property here, so you talked, Terry, about, or maybe it was Dave, or somebody talked about wanting to push this through. Sooner, because there's concerns about making sure we have food trucks for a pickleball tournament.
Right.
That might be on this property.
Right.
This property hasn't been doing.
Right.
Year after year after year.
Okay.
So this property would be subject to this ordinance. Technically, legally, it's not, but the township has always said that we're gonna follow our own rules. The reason I say technically legally it's not, because under basic common law where the king is not. Charged with having to follow the laws that the king makes. Municipalities don't have to follow their own laws. So the township could ignore this if it wanted to, but the township has said, no, we're gonna follow our own zone. So with that, if you want to have food trucks for a pickleball tournament, you're gonna have to follow this. Mika was then explaining how that process was gonna go.
Okay. I appreciate that, that's, that's a big help. So. Any event that would take place on the fair. Grounds would be exempt, including the Celtic?
Yeah, generally speaking, because the the township has allowed other events outside of the Ottawa County Fair to take part on that.
Right.
There may have been. Musicians at one time, because I think we even changed the rules about not allowing alcohol on township property. For the fair a couple of years ago, because I remember they were gonna bring in. Modern musicians like Johnny Cougar is what they claimed a couple of years ago, and I explained to them that Johnny Cougar's been by John Mellencamp for like twenty years. And he's probably not a modern musician anymore.
I'm good. All right, thank you, appreciate it.
All right, I would like a motion, and then if we need further discussion, we'll take it. And now we have a chance to discuss it further if need be. Saying nothing, I'll call the question, all in favor, and this was a. A few edits and we're recommending it to the board for approval, that's really what we're doing, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, okay. Who knows, it may be the last of food drinks. Item eight, actually eight point five. Is hysteria name as the result on division as part of the PUD, they were, um. Were required to put in the side path, we've agreed the side path should go in, public came and said, but the trees. And so we agreed to have a survey done, which was done and came in yesterday.
Did.
And the developer has been held up for quite a while with this, and that's why I wanted to, uh. See if we can get it through today, so he can maybe get it done this year. Um, and we, Tom and Mika and I looked at it this morning, Tom and Mika went down. Together, I was busy and looked at it, and then Mika went back later, so you really know what we're talking about.
Yes, well, uh, let's hope. No, this, this is, um, I, I thought it was really interesting to get the tree survey back and you have it in front of you, um. Yeah, it was one of the items on your diet, so I, I tried to provide enough that you were able to kind of see what was going on there. Um, after walking it the second time, um. Kind of walking through the center and looking at, uh, the trees that are identified and the trees that are tagged within the, within the marked side path. Uh, and the really large number of invasive species that are present there. Um, there are very few trees, few if any, I don't wanna say none because. I was trampling through brambles, I could have missed something, um, but very, very few, if any, really desirable trees are actually located within the side path area. Um, I don't know how much additional would need to be removed in order to construct the side path, I'm not too concerned about the health of the surrounding trees, given that it only goes down. Six inches, maybe twelve in some places, but it's typically a pretty shallow dig for the side path, so. Um, my, my overall impression is that, uh, there will be more screening that remains than the neighbors expect. Um, a lot of that will also grow back fairly quickly and that this doesn't, the, the developer has done a good job of. Going around the really significant trees that are out there, there are a couple huge oaks. Out there, I mean, a couple that are really large, the path goes around those, um, in a couple of different directions, so, uh, at the end of the day. Really all that information, I feel pretty comfortable with it, but, um, that is obviously up to you.
If, I mean, what we're trying to do here is figure out which trees to save specifically.
Um, I, I would actually suggest trying to avoid specifically saying which trees to save. Because I think that's gonna be difficult for the developer to, to do, we don't want them to have to come back to us and say. Um, well, actually, we need to remove this tree, we need to remove that tree, um, this is kind of, I would, I would generally comfortable. With what we see in this plan.
Okay. But also a couple of other things, we're not landscaping, we're not removing trees people don't like. We're not going in and removing all the trees of heaven because they're invasive. We're just trying to make sure that some, the significant trees, for the most part, are saved. And we're not trying to save dead trees. Or poor trees, we're not taking out the dead trees.
Um, there's quite a few of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, go ahead.
Yeah, some of those more significant, like the handful of, like the large, the very large forty inch oaks, that sort of thing, I think we can be specific about that, but. That is also noted on the plans that they've submitted to.
So those trees are already being saved.
Correct.
Did, did you note any, I mean, each tree is numbered individually, so you can identify them. Did you see any mistakes in their plan, are they saving a tree of heaven because it's big?
Yes. I think so.
That would be my guess.
There were a couple.
Yeah, i- if they're saving that in preference to something else, that we would rather save than. That, but anyway, we, we're not going in, we're not fixing it all. We're just allowing the bike path, getting a boat, and trying to save some of the more significant trees.
Let's see, red are invasive, right?
So a Norway maple, I learned, I learned this morning is invasive.
They are.
Isn't this good fair and poor?
On the map, so we've got a couple different, yeah, we've got a lot of colors.
Yeah, on the maps, it's, it's, they're good, the fair is poor, dead.
The yellow highlighted are invasive, I believe.
Yeah.
Yes. Oh, sorry. Let me, let me, did I highlight, I don't have my memo in front of me, I think I said there, um, I may have highlighted the ones above fifteen inches.
Oh, yeah.
Is that what they did on that one?
Right. Yeah, those are the larger.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the other thing too. I think the other thing we saw too was the, uh, a lot of the trees were actually outside of the path, there were some that were marked that were not. Gonna be affected because they were either behind it or a few in front of it. So I think to your point, the screening might be a little bit more than what we thought would be there, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we heard comments about grapevines and all kinds of things, we're not going in and cleaning those out.
I think they're terrible, this, you know, the, the significant oaks that were identified, maybe sure that we were. Trying our best to preserve those.
Yeah, I think they've got that in the plan, and if we wanna specifically note, you know, those in particular, that, that's probably workable, but.
Looking at this, do we deliver a field for how many trees are coming out?
Um, I wasn't able to really get a count for that, um. I think I marked on the sheet, on the spreadsheet, what ones were, there are Xs on the, in the, on the left-hand side.
All the way to the left.
Um, but that's, that's probably of these, the one I'm least confident of, just because I was, I was trying to trample through there, but. You're bouncing back on both sides of the fence and I couldn't get to everything, so it's, it's gonna be a little bit more than that, I don't think I missed fifty trees.
So. So these Xs.
Yes.
Are showing that.
Yeah, so those are located within the taped out area, they still have that tape out there, it's showing where the side path would be, those Xs are located within that taped area. Yeah, and I would, and I would estimate a little more than that, but yeah.
Yeah. In the asterisk vein.
Big preservation.
Those asterisks are, that's a really good tree.
Really big trees too.
Yeah.
Really good, really.
That how many are, sixteen Xs? That way you could spend three. That's not very many. Well, that's. That many six inches and bigger trees.
Correct, there are trees out there that are smaller than that.
Yeah, and, and most of the asterisked trees are the big black oaks.
Yeah, right.
So I, I think this looks good, I, I think they did a good job apparently of laying it out. We did our survey, I'm only in a little bit of trouble with Howard.
Did Ryan do this?
Yep, so. This would be a motion, I think, to. Approve.
Approve, and then if you wanted to designate any of these tree numbers, I don't think, I mean, we have to be careful about how much, because we don't wanna. Kind of mess it up, um.
Right.
Have them come back here, but to make sure that it's clear, um. Those larger ones that are shown on the, the site plan from before that it goes around, to make sure it's clear that those remain.
So let me, the asterisked are really nice trees, are they also already protected?
I think so, I can't give you a hundred percent, because I.
Right.
There wasn't a way for me to definitively say this tree right here is the same one as is marked on that.
Okay.
But we could do that, I'm sure that they have, I'm sure they have these coordinates.
How about if we say we would like to proceed? Our assumption is that these trees are being saved, the ones you highlighted. And if not, we'd like to know, I don't wanna hold them up, you make the decision.
Okay.
At a staff level. That's all good. I, I think having a motion at this point is appropriate.
And the, the motion is that the ones that are starred.
Asterisk.
Asterisks.
They have three asterisks by them, that's not an easy word to say. Those are the trees we'd like to save, we believe they're being saved, if they're not, work it out with staff. And the rest of them. Whatever happens will happen.
So at this point. Just clarify. We don't know how many of these trees that are fifteen inches or greater are gonna be removed.
Uh, my best, I'm, yeah, my best guess is what's on this, the spreadsheet, that's sixteen.
Sixteen.
Well, the sixteen total, I don't know if those all. I don't think they're all sixteen or.
Most of them are smaller.
Quite a, quite a few trees will be removed.
Yeah.
There are.
And probably a few more than are noted on here that are right close to the path.
We can, we can expect it to be noticeable to the neighborhood, I mean, it, it will be.
But I, I still think I was primarily preserving good specimens.
Yeah.
The asterisk ones. Yeah.
Yeah, there's a couple of oak, black oaks that are in fair condition. Which, you know, if some are gonna go, those would be the better ones to go, but I think. We've done our homework, we have a plan, plan looks good, staff can handle any changes, so.
Okay, so, so the sidewalk, this would basically be constructed as it's on here, um, we've been talking about trees, one other thing to mention is that. I had asked the developer a couple of times to change some of these, um. The, the trail ID, it's not really a trend radiator, but the, the sharpness at which the, it goes around, are you comfortable with me following up on that? As long as it doesn't have significant impacts on trees and saying, let's not have, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Because visibility is important.
Yes.
At close calls, so. I made a motion, which I didn't say here's motion, but I think we have it on the floor that, um, we'll proceed, give the. Developer permission to approve that these are the trees that, um. We believe that we would like to save the ones that are asterisked on this list, if. One of them is coming out, or if any of them are coming out, they should notify staff before taking them out, and staff will make the decision.
If that's a motion, I'll second it.
I think I said.
Um, could, could I add, could I recommend in addition to the. Motion, which would be, um, that this, uh, the sidewalk plan had been previously presented. C nine oh one, um, is conceptually approved and planning commission. Um, authorizes staff to record developer on, uh, improving the flow of the path.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, both the motion maker and the second are agreeing. Thank you for reminding me of that. All right. Further discussion, call the question, all, yes?
Do you remember exactly in the P U D, what is requiring by the developer?
That they put it in was essentially the. Five foot, needed to be a five foot side path, I don't think that the material is specified. Yeah, so we've, we've talked about it and we'd be looking at an asphalt's path, I think is where we landed, because that's what we have elsewhere. In the township, it makes it easier for maintenance. It's also cheaper than concrete.
And if you wanted to put in porous, which you won't. I'm good with it. All right, so now we're back to the motion, all in favor, say aye, aye, opposed, none. Thank you, um, we're on to item nine, other business and announcements, I don't have any that I remember. Anything significant out of the zoning board?
We had, um, two applicants come to the first. Um, one was a cover size. And, um, it became very apparent to the applicant that we were on our approach. At which time she said, I live in constraints. Second was on a deck and setback, and, uh, it was smooth. And we, we ran it down.
Okay. From the board, anything?
Uh, just one thing, uh, the board reversed. Uh, the planning commission's decision not to rezonate the private park that's being put in. Uh, with the proposal that we had, that we would. Re, you know, change the, uh, private park into agricultural. I think, uh, would voted, uh, to just go ahead and rezonate, even though the spot zoning. Uh, they went ahead and did that at the, voted for three. I voted no, because I thought that all we were doing was expediting the process. By doing that, uh, and but two others voted, uh, in opposition to the park itself.
To the park itself.
But it did have.
And the people in favor, were they more concerned with schedule or some process, process thing?
I think scheduled, even though I told them what we have learned here, and while it's my private conversation with them, that. It wasn't an issue, the only issue was the blue areas, that we had to get consensus. Kind of get consensus from the board that it would be approved, so that the developer, the owner would know whether that we need to do. Take the blue area out or not take the area left. And so I shared that and, uh, what, uh, the supervisor, and it was really the person who advocated that we just go forward with the result.
Okay, well, thank you.
And it was very congenial and complimentary to finding commission by starting its statement by saying. Planning commission doesn't break down and that. We normally support everything they do, but this is my, my point to recommend that we. Uh, not follow what the planning commission has recommended that we reach out. So that was his presentation and he got.
Okay, thank you.
One of the concerns that was mentioned, um, with the dissenting votes, and I don't remember who it was that I talked to, but. Uh, was with farmland preservation and was, um, having heard from farmers and saying, hey, the township says they wanna do farmland preservation. And now, you know, is this preserving farmland, so that was, that was one of the things that was also communicated in the meeting.
That we're, that we're not preserving farmland when we're allowing that.
Correct.
Yep, I think we discussed that when it was here. Anything further? Mister, mister motion here is, tonight, there's motion. Thank you. All in favor, say aye, aye. Thank you all for your attention tonight and, uh, hard work. It's not easy. Thank you.